Texas was still a frontier of opportunity. The area was named after a stop on the International Great Northern Railroad, built to connect Houston to the northern parts of the state. In 1935, the Aldine Independent School District was officially established. Education became a central pillar for the growing area, and Aldine ISD would go on to become one of the largest school districts in Texas. Today, Aldine is a place of renewal. Its schools are centers of innovation. Its neighborhoods pulse with multicultural pride. And its future is being written by a new generation determined to carry forward the legacy of hard work and resilience. Aldine, once a quiet railroad stop, is now a symbol of community spirit and perseverance. Its story is far from over. And like all great stories, it's written by the people who live it every day. What is your Aldine story?
Well, howdy, neighbors. I'm Commissioner Sid Miller of the Texas Department of Agriculture. Hey, I wish everyone at Aldine ISD a successful and nutritious 2025-26 school year. Now, last April, I visited an Aldine cafeteria for Texas Fruit and Vegetable Day, and I saw the extraordinary work your school nutrition teams do to bring Texas products to the students. Now, you can make the grade this year, too, by encouraging students to eat breakfast and lunch at school and help them always remember Texas agriculture matters.
Hello, Aldine ISD. Bienvenidos. I'm your State Representative, Sinphonia Thompson, and I'm proud to represent a portion of Aldine ISD. I'd like to welcome you all back for another inspiring school year. Thank you for our facility staff, child nutrition workers, librarians, teachers, administrators, for everything you do. Your passion, dedication, and resilience continue to shape the future of our students and community as a whole. Let's make this year one of growth, connection, and unity. I pray you all have a safe and fantastic year. Have a blessed school year. Que Dios los bendiga.
Hello, this is State Representative Armando Wally. I'm a proud product of Aldine Independent School District, and I know you're coming up on a new school year. I just want to say thank you. Hope you have a great and wonderful school year, particularly for our administration, our APs, our principals, our custodians, our transportation, child nutrition folks, but also, more importantly, to our teachers that are going to be there on a daily basis with our children. Our children deserve the best. You are the best that will teach these children on a daily basis. And I want to say thank you, God bless you. And on behalf of my family, most of my brothers and sisters are Aldine ISD products. And so, we just want to say thank you, good luck. Que Dios los bendiga.
Hello, Aldine ISD teachers and staff. This is Congresswoman Sylve Garcia, and I'm so excited to help welcome you back for a brand-new school year. I know how hard you work, the long hours, the dedication, and the hard you bring every day. Each of you is essential to our students' success, whether you're in the classroom, in the office, on the buses, in the cafeterias, or keeping the schools running behind the scenes. You're just not teaching lessons or doing your jobs. You're opening doors, sparking curiosity, and helping our kids grow bigger every day, bigger and better than ever. And as you dive into this next year, remember to focus on inspiring and supporting your students, and I'll continue to fight for you here in Washington. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for all that you do for our children, our community, and our future. Wishing you an amazing, successful school year. God bless.
Congratulations educating Aldine's youth and positively impacting our region for 90 years. The District Advancement Champions at Region 4 Education Service Center wish you many more years of preparing students for exceptionally bright futures. Here's to 90 years.
Well, my story begins in first grade at Carter Elementary. And so, going there, I started as a dancer, and I really enjoyed that. And I just loved moving and being with music. So, that was fun. But then, while I was there, as a second grader, they started offering orchestra classes. And so, my teacher, Ms. Kim, she was our first orchestra teacher, and we were her first class to begin the orchestra program there. So, I started playing violin from second grade, and I carried that on with me all the way to middle school. So, my directors knew me and my family because my two older sisters, Jocelyn and Christina, had already gone through there. And Jocelyn was a performer. And they knew that, obviously, I had to have a voice because my whole family can sing and has been singing there for four or five years already. My favorite part was definitely playing Effie in Dreamgirls. Honestly, she wasn't a character that I thought would ever be my dream role, but playing her taught me so much about myself, as well as just how I look at all characters now. Because everybody kind of has this idea of who they think Effie is, and it's very generalized and is very surface level. And so, taking her on, that's the mindset that I went in about her having. And so, to really break down the character and to truly understand her arc and the journey that I took on becoming her, it made me appreciate her so much more and appreciate her story. And it made me more passionate about telling her story because I didn't want her to be misunderstood, how I misunderstood her at one point. Hi, Aldine teachers and staff. Thank you.
Good evening. The time is now 6:30 p.m., and I would like to call to order the November 17, 2025 study session of the Board of Trustees of the Aldine Independent School District. Let the minutes reflect that the following board members are present: Mr. Paul Shanklin, Mr. Steve Mead, Rose Avalos, Mr. Randy Bates, and Dr. Garcia, myself, Dr. Booker. We have one excused board member, that's Ms. Connie Espaza. We also have guests viewing our meeting tonight. Thank you for joining us. And now, we will have the report of the administration staff, beginning with our superintendent, Dr. Goffney.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, my agenda begins on page 23. Our item for tonight is our Lone Star Governance Data Review. The constraint that we'll be reviewing is constraint two, CPMs 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, and 2.4. And at this time, I'm going to give it over to our Chief of Analytics, Assessments, and Accountability, Dr. Rodriguez. She'll be joined by members of the team so that we can review this constraint as indicated on our board monitoring calendar.
Good evening, President Booker, Dr. Goffney, members of the board. Tonight, we continue with our monthly Lone Star Governance Data Review. We're going to look specifically at constraint number two, which is student absenteeism. This presentation, along with all of our presentations related to Lone Star Governance, again, is directly aligned to our district's strategic priorities, making sure that we regularly monitor. Our data is consistent specifically with aligned systems. Here are our Aldine ISD student outcome goals. And then, we also included our targets for the 25-26 school year. Here are our Aldine ISD superintendent constraints. And we've also included the targets for the 25-26 school year. And if you'll look specifically at constraint number two, 22% is the target for the 25-26 school year. Our board monitoring calendar, this is November, and as Dr. Goffney just mentioned, we will be looking specifically at student absenteeism and the progress measures aligned with student absenteeism to share with you progress as of October 2025. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Diakka Melendez, our Chief of Student Supports and School Improvement, and she will share with you our progress on constraint number two.
Good evening, President Booker, Dr. Goffney, and the Board of Trustees. It's my pleasure to come before you tonight and give you an update on our student absenteeism and superintendent's constraint. I'd like to remind the board that the goal of this particular constraint is the percentage of students absent. For more than 10%, the school year would decrease from 26.3 in school year 23-24 to 16% in school year 28-29. And so, currently, when we look at our student absenteeism for the end of the 2025 school year, we end it with 26.15% of our students. As of October 2025, we are currently at 20.06%, which is a change of negative 6.09%. So, we're currently under our target. And I do want to remind the board that this is a snapshot of where we are in October. And so, we do have a lot of school left. And so, though we definitely see the progress and we're optimistic about finishing the year strong, I just want to point out that this is where we are in the current snapshot of the school year. When we talk about student absenteeism, one of the things that we utilize here in Aldine ISD is the RAWI platform. You've heard me talk about that over the last few years. This is the platform that we use to reach out to parents and establish attendance contracts. And so, it is important that all of the interventions in RAWI are completed. And so, our goal to make sure those interventions are done for the 25-26 school year is that 87% of everything in RAWI is processed and sent out to parents. At the end of last year, we were at 93%. And as of October, we're at 93.24%, which is an increase of 0.24%, which is above our goal. But once again, we do have some school left for the remainder of the year. But we're pretty confident with RAWI that we have good, strong, robust systems in place to ensure that the campuses meet these expectations. For our average daily attendance. So, this is our actual attendance and where we sit. So, our target for this year is 94.16. We ended last year, actually slightly above that target, at 94.17. And you will see currently, we're at 94.67, which right now is an increase of 0.5%. So, if I can remind the board, the first year that we implemented RAWI and really had a focus on attendance, we had an increase of about 1.3% for total attendance. And then, last year, we were right below, right at 0.5%. So, when you add that up over the last two years, it's almost a 2% increase in average daily attendance over the last two years. As we continue to go through the 25-26 school year, one of the things that I do want to point out and just let the board know is that as we start to do our home visits, as we start to work with our schools and communicate, we are seeing some concerns about federal legislation. And so, we're also starting to hear concerns about various agencies out in the community. We've had several parents express concern about students attending school. We've had several parents express concerns about being out in the community. So, it's definitely something that we're going to keep our eye on. But I do want to make sure the board is aware that that is something that we are starting to hear, specifically for our community. And of course, you know that we definitely had a lot of work that we had to do at the end of last year. If you remember, in January, February of last year, our ADA declined after we had a change in federal administration, and it took us a few months to get it back to where it needed to be. So, though we don't have a change in federal administration right now, we are definitely starting to hear that level of conversation much earlier than we heard last year. So, I do want to caution you all about that as well. And this is our elementary ADA. And so, one of the things is we want to highlight the campuses that we know are continuing to grow average daily attendance. And I want you to think about a campus growing average daily attendance three consecutive years in a row. That becomes considerably harder each year because the threshold gets higher and higher and higher. So, the three campuses that you're here from tonight are doing just that. And so, the first campus that we want to highlight is Reed Academy. And I know Ms. St. Julian isn't here with us tonight, but her assistant principal is here. So, if I could have her come up and share the wonderful things that are happening at Reed Academy and what they are doing to increase their average daily attendance.
Thank you, and thank you for Dr. Goffney and all who are on the board tonight. One of the things, I know we have RAWI as our primary source for looking at our attendance and keeping the attendance very strong and growing. So, in conjunction with that, we also have our teachers who are looking at students who actually have three or more consecutive absences, and they're emailing our team that we have that actually do those calls out to our parents. So, we don't just wait for the RAWI system. We try to stay ahead of it. So, that's one of the things we do. But in conjunction to that as well, we try to highlight our students. Every three weeks, we try to keep it on that grading cycle. And so, on Fridays, we do celebrations with the highest grade level for each grade-level team. They receive rewards, such as their trophies, and also treats. Also, for each nine-week, we do a celebration for students who had the perfect attendance. And we print their certificates. We give them pencils and other treats as well. Teachers celebrate them in their classrooms. We announce them on the announcements as well. And also, we track the attendance with our teachers. So, we reward our teachers for making sure attendance is accurate because that's a big part of it as well. So, we do different things for them, keeping that attendance going. And the other thing that we do is make sure that we're starting to invite our parents out, like we did before, to celebrate our students with luncheons for those students who have the highest attendance. But the main thing is calling those parents when those contracts are due, getting them on campus, sitting in front of them, and having those conversations. So, those are some of the things that we do to help our tenants at Reed Academy.
Thank you so much. So, as we move on and we look at our middle schools. And so, we know that as students get older, we have a tendency to see our average daily attendance decline. But as you can see here for our middle schools, at the end of last year, we were at 92.88%. And so forth for October, we're at 94.04, which is an increase of 1.16% at our secondary level. So, we're very proud of that. And one of the campuses that has done a tremendous job with focusing on ADA this year is Aldine Middle School. So, I'll have the principal, Jose Diaz, come to the podium and share the wonderful things that they are doing at Aldine Middle to increase ADA.
Good evening, President Booker, Dr. Goffney, and Board of Trustees. Thank you all for letting me come out this evening and talk to you guys. I also want to thank Ms. Melendez and Dr. Mensah for their continued support throughout the course of the year. I would highlight the collective support, not only from our teachers, from our administration team, our counselors, and our families for really helping really increase our attendance we've really seen this year. Also, I would say we've been using RAWI pretty consistently. That really helps support the work we're doing in terms of knowing when our kids are not there and kind of how we follow those things up. Also, doing the call-outs and rewarding our kids that have perfect attendance has been a game changer. I also would say our early intervention, like whenever we start to realize that a child's not at school, like how do we follow back up to make sure they know that somebody's checking on them? Use of Teach Like a Champion and thresholding, meeting kids at the door. In my transition from Orange Grove to Aldine Middle, the one thing I realized is going to be every kid needs a champion. And when you can greet a kid at the door, it changes that somebody really cares about them. I also say the one thing I've had to learn about middle school, getting back in a middle school is to be having candy. Kids go crazy for candy. Also, I'm really big on the high fives and the fist bumps. And so, being visible and being out there is critical, and the kids knowing that somebody's going to meet them every day off the bus ramp, in the hallways, and seeing when they go, just remind them, hey, I can't wait to see you tomorrow. And so, these are the things that we're doing that's really changing it and is really encouraging our family's support and really the work we're doing. Again, thank you for all your support.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. And so, as we move on, and then we look at high school. And so, for our high school, our goal for the year is 88.87%. We finished last year, actually, at 89.27%. And as of October, we're at 91.6%, which is an increase of 2.33%. So, we've seen tremendous growth at the high schools. The goal is to maintain it because we're starting off strong. But this is also the first level that when we start to see absenteeism and community concerns, it shows up at the high school level first. So, it's definitely something we'll be keeping our eyes on. So, I would like to bring at the podium this time Mr. Anthony Watkins, the principal of Davis High School, who's going to talk about some of the work that they're doing at Davis to help increase ADA.
Good evening, Dr. Goffney, President Booker, and the school board members. Thank you all for having me this evening. I think one of the big things that happens at high school is connecting with kids. That is a big part of what we try to do. We take every opportunity we have to speak to students about attendance. We can connect it to graduation. We can connect it to credits. Anytime a parent comes in, we have a conversation about attendance, about grades, and any other reasons why they come. We have a very strong attendance team that meets every week to review our data. We have our attendance contracts on Mondays, making sure that we contact parents, making sure that that attendance team, which consists of an AP that leads that work, our attendants, our registration, and our secretaries, and then all of our APs are part of that same group also. We celebrate our students. At high school, it's a little bit different, but they still love candy. They still love the same kind of treats. But you do really have to, you know, you have to kind of get past that pretty quick because of the importance of coming to school and the work that kids have to do. We want to make sure also that our teachers, making sure that, one, we take attendance correctly. That is a big, big opportunity we have, just to ensure that we are not missing any of our students that are present at school. I pretty much lead the daily announcements, and I talk about attendance, making sure you're here on time, making sure that you're authentically engaged in the work, and making sure that teaching and learning is happening every single day. We do have a student support specialist that's been on board now. She's new to Davis this year. But she also helps with that attendance team and with home visits and things like that as far as with our parent contacts. But also, a big part of it is making sure kids are connected to the campus, whether it's in UIL activities, whether it's in their program of study, whether it's in clubs and organizations. When kids are connected to the campus, they tend to have better attendance. They have more eyes on them, better grades. So, we have so many opportunities for kids. We just want to make sure we have something for every student so that you not only come to school for the academic part, but you come to gain those social and emotional experiences, but also help you prepare for what is awaiting you after high school. All right, thank you all.
So, some of the steps that we're taking in 25-26 is we're continuing to do what we know has worked over the last two years. But of course, we're constantly looking at that and tweaking that. Tonight, we also have here our Executive Director of School Administration, Mr. Lindeman, and our Director of School Administration, Mr. Krampetan, who do a lot of the work with our dropout recovery specialists for attendance. So, I know that you heard from all of our principals, and they all mentioned RAWI, and that's our platform. If you miss three days of work, six days of work, nine days of work, someone's going to be looking for you. We expect the same thing for our students. So, when we hit those thresholds, we reach out. We also go and visit all of our students over the summer who had more than 50 absences. We want to see like, hey, last year was last year, but this is a new year. We want to make sure that we equip them and get ahead of any concerns and visit with those parents. And then, one of the things that we do is we have weekly communication. It comes out every Monday. I send to the district all administrators average daily attendance for every single campus, year over year, so they can see this is where you were this time last year. This is where you are this time this year. And then, being very proactive about working with that. Our student support service team then works with campuses where we see declining attendance. I will tell you something that we talked about today that we're going to have to look at is because the threshold for attendance is getting a little bit harder year over year, we have campuses who actually have higher attendance than they did last year, but not at the same level as quickly. So, we're actually going to go in and start looking at some of those campuses to see if we can kind of get ahead of those patterns and trends. And then, one of the things that we do utilize is we do utilize a relationship and a partnership with Harris County. There are some students that after contracts, interventions, we do reach out and do our triad, which is what kind of services do those students may need and what those families, and then ultimately, sometimes we do take our kids to court if we hit that threshold. But we definitely do our best to avoid that. And then, you heard about attendance incentives. We do continue to award at each ILT $250 to the feeder school that has the highest increase of ADA each month. And then, counselors, teachers, and staff, they continue to support. And then, we work with Dr. Rodriguez's team in student services to ensure that we have proper procedures with our registrars, our attendance clerks, on how we enroll and withdraw students so that when students leave our district, it's just not they leave. We look for them, and we ensure that they show up someplace else. And if they don't, we have a process and a system in place to look for that student. And so, all of that work collectively is what we're doing. And then, one of the things that we did implement last year was we piloted night school. And what we see and saw from the success of that program and as we get ready for it for this year is that we do have a small pocket of students where the traditional school day is not going to be conducive to their success. And so, working with the resources that we have here to ensure that those students still meet their requirements for graduation. So, that is all of the steps that we're taking for this school year for attendance. Do you all have any questions in regards to attendance?
Any questions from the board at this time? Dr. Garcia?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank you and the team and the principals who are here, who came to give testimony about what they're doing for the good work that the students are doing as a result of the work in the school. I do have a couple of questions. One, it's just for us. I noticed that, for the board, I mean, that we agreed, I know that we redeveloped the plan, configured the plans in one of our last meetings. And I know that a good number of the targets here are lower, in fact, than the end result of the May outcome for average daily attendance. So, I don't remember why we did that. But it's kudos to the group that have advanced and moved well beyond what the target is already or even before the year started. So, anyways, so that's a good thing. But I think that we need to continue to reassess the expectation because, one, the budget implications, as well as student learning. And so, that would be important. The other questions I do have is you had wonderful examples of what is working. And I know that here on this last page that you had, on page 40, there is just a statement that you've identified campuses with declining attendance and are creating specialized support plans. Could you share just a little bit more about, in addition to, I'm going to say it wrong again, RAWI?
RAWI.
RAWI. What are the other supports? In other words, you know, particularly the high schools, there are a couple of them still that are not moving forward. And so, what is it that the district can do or is doing to support those schools that are not doing what the ones demonstrated today are doing?
Okay, great question. So, what our team does is at the six-week mark, we tier campuses. So, we go in and we look at three factors. We look at how well they're implementing the interventions for RAWI. That's the first thing. We look at their average daily attendance. And then, we look at the goal of are they increasing at 0.5%? So, then, we take those three things, and Mr. Krampetan does an amazing job of creating formulas. And then, we determine where a campus falls. And then, what happens is then, our team goes out and we sit down with the principal. And we talk about what do you believe are some of the things that are contributing to declining attendance? And one of the things, and I've shared this before, is that sometimes we have a tendency to focus on the kids at the very lowest end of the spectrum, the kids who've missed 20, 30 days. And that is definitely an area to focus on. But really, what moves ADA are the kids more in the middle. And so, what we do is we give them a specialized list of kids to target. So, for example, if I'm there 70% of the time, I'm there enough for you to maybe not pay attention to me because I'm there most of the time. And so, the attention tends to go to the kids that are 20, 30% of the time. But the vast majority of kids that are impacting ADA are sitting between the 60 and 75 percentile. So, it's really working with those families and those students and helping them because sometimes they get lost in the mix. And so, that's what we usually do, and that usually shifts ADA. And then, there are instances where even we've seen with elementary schools, sometimes their ADA was so high that they declined because it's hard to maintain. We have an elementary school I'm thinking of that started the year at 95.67%. She has declining attendance because she's trying to maintain that 95.67%. So we do that, and then we also do a lot of home visits. Our dropout recovery team goes to our students that are exhibiting chronic absenteeism, and then our student support specialists at the high school level. And that's where we get the conversations and stories. Sometimes kids are working. This is where we're starting to get information about what they feel is going on in the community. So just ensuring them that school is a safe place. And of our schools, we actually only have eleven that have declining attendance right now. And so it's really working with those campuses to have a specialized plan.
Okay, good. And I may have asked this question before, but tell us again about the student support specialists and their function, their role. It's been mentioned a couple of times. And are they new positions? And, and considering the budget, are, have we, you know, what is the budgetary implication of that?
So the student support specialists, they're not new positions. They're at all the comprehensive high schools. We also have one at Hall. And so they are actually certified counselors, and so they have a dual role. Their primary role is to push kids towards graduation, but they work very closely with the dropout recovery team because this is the person that goes in and specializes on the kid that I just said, like maybe the kid that needs night school, maybe the kid that's working, maybe the kid that's short on credits. They have their regular alpha counselor, but this person also does a lot of home visits. So these, they're all young women. And so they all team up with the dropout recovery specialist to go work with them. They're also on their school's attendance teams. So they come up with a lot of the initiatives for the campus, working on attendance. And because they are licensed counselors, they do a lot of counseling with students who are not at school for various reasons. But I think one of the most critical things they do is they meet with every student that withdraws. And so that ensures that when a student comes in and says, I don't want to be in school anymore, I want to drop out, they have to see the student support specialist. So that pulls up their transcript and their grades and goes over, okay, this is a plan. This is what we can do. This is how we can work. So they are the stopgap, if you will, for our students just being able to come to campus and withdraw. So they're a very critical component in helping work with the high school level of getting kids across the stage and then working with the dropout recovery team.
So has that been a transition from what used to be truancy officer sort of?
That's the dropout recovery specialist. So those positions are also, have been here. And that's, they're actually, they spend the majority of the day at home visits. They go to apartment complexes. So every time we have a kid that withdraws, one of the things, once again, that Mr. Karampatan does with his amazing spreadsheets is the registrars and the attendance clerks now. So if you come in and withdraw today and you don't show up in the next three to five days at someplace else, they're going to go look to see where you are. So they're going to go to the residence and see, hey, did you move? Where are you? They're going to get on the phone and call Chicago, Denver, wherever the student said that they're going, and track that student down and to ensure that they enroll in school. And they do a lot of that, just finding kids. Because we have parents that say that they're going to take their child someplace else, and then they don't show up. And so we're just kind of that voice, hey, you said you were going here, you're not here yet. What's going on and how can we help?
All right. Thank you again for what you do.
Thank you.
And I just had to come in. I just want to thank you and your team for the numbers because we know a lot is going on. Just want to thank Reed Academy and Aldi Middle School and Davis High School for the work that they're doing. And I know that they're not the only three campuses. And just looking at the data and everything that's going on, you know, talking to my educator friends, a lot is going on with the shutdown, with the raise going on. I know parents are not sending their, sometimes not sending their students to school because they did not get paid. You know, it's, it's many factors. I walk around my neighborhood, there are many homes vacant now. People have moved out. So I thank you for the numbers, what we're doing under our control, just really trying to support our parents. But there are a lot of factors, and people that are in education, they understand that it's a lot of challenges. So I just want to thank you and your team. I know Mr. Karampatan, he will build a spreadsheet. I worked with him before. If anybody can build a spreadsheet and find us where the students are, it's him. So thank you for being on this team, and I know that the work is, is being done. And I know it's a lot of hard work because it's not easy to even move that needle up just a small amount. It takes a lot to move it up.
Yes.
Just like if a kid is failing, it takes a lot to bring it up. You have to make several one hundreds to move that grade up. So I know it's work being done, and just to see the numbers increasing from the end of the year to now, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank your team.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Any other board members? I see none.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Dr. Booker, Board of Trustees, that concludes my presentation. However, our auditors have arrived, and so we wanted to make space for them, if we can, to present at the top of the meeting. We'll turn it over to our CFO, Mr. Momany.
Mr. Momany, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Booker, Dr. Goffney, members of the board. My name is Timothy Momany, Chief Financial Officer. And today we would like to have our auditors give you an overview of our audit. It was added to the board book. And in summary, and they will be stating the same, it was a clean audit. We always strive to have clean financials. And so I'll turn it over to Greg Peterson, the audit partner.
Could he remind us where it starts in the?
Page four eighty-three.
Four eighty-three, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Timothy. So my name is Greg Peterson. I'm the audit partner with Weaver and Tidwell and the engagement partner for your audit. It is my pleasure to present the results from fiscal year 2025. Obviously, the document itself is, is very large, so we will be going over, going over the audit in a summary form this evening. So before we get started, you know, I'd like to define what the purpose of an audit is. So the purpose for our audit is, is just to provide reasonable assurance that the information in that financial report is materially correct. And then that could be used to, as a board, make informed decisions using the information from that report. So the audit is not an evaluation of the economics, you know, well-being of the district. That gets done by T E A and by your financial advisors. Simply put, our audit is just to say that the information presented for the fiscal year ended 2025 is materially correct. Part of our audit, we have, we follow different auditing standards. So we follow generally accepted auditing standards, but we're also required to follow governmental auditing standards because the district receives public funds. In addition to looking at just the district's numbers, we also have to conduct a single audit, which is an audit of federal expenditures. Since the district expends federal funds, we have to perform a single audit. We do that in accordance with uniform guidance. And in addition, we also test for compliance. So we review the district's contracts, state requirements to sure, ensure that they are in compliance with state requirements. Some of those compliance topics that we, we test are the Public Funds Investment Act and also some procurement laws. Our audit process starts with us taking a risk-based approach to, to the audit, where we identify certain areas that we want to perform additional procedures. One of those areas is cash dispersments. Obviously, we are very concerned about money coming in and money going out, so we like to do additional procedures to add that reliability to the information that we're presenting. And we also want to test for proper revenue recognition. So the money coming in, we want to make sure that is properly stated. In addition to just looking at the numbers, we also evaluate the district's internal controls. That's kind of the foundation for the district's operations for which these financial numbers are built upon. Again, we do test compliance, and our audit is designed to provide reasonable assurance. So we will be issuing an unmodified opinion on these financial statements. So that is also known as a clean opinion. So you can't get a higher opinion than an unmodified clean opinion. As I mentioned, we do more than just test the numbers. We do evaluate compliance, which we did not identify any non-compliance. We evaluate internal controls. Happy to present that we did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls over financial reporting. As a board, those are, are great results from the audit. In addition, as I mentioned, we also perform a single audit. This year, which is unique and very unusual, the report that we're presenting for our single audit is going to be in a draft form. And the reason for that is because of the government shutdown. So prior to the government shutting down, they were supposed to issue the twenty-five compliant, O M B compliant supplement. Because of the government shutdown, that has been delayed, and they have not issued the final compliance supplement. They have issued a draft form of that supplement, which we followed, and we conducted our single audit in accordance with the draft. So once they issue the final, we'll go final with our single audit report. But as it's presented this evening, it is in a draft form. We do test internal controls over the compliance requirements for these federal programs. We did not identify any material weaknesses in those internal control processes. We did identify what is a significant deficiency, which we'll go over on the next slide regarding that deficiency. But we also did not identify any non-compliance as part of our procedures. So every, all the compliance requirements that are directed material to that program do not have any compliance findings. The, the programs that we tested were the Title I program, the Title II program, and I D A B. Those three programs gave us forty-seven percent coverage of your total federal expenditures. Your total federal expenditures were a hundred and forty-two million dollars. So as I mentioned, we did identify a deficiency in internal controls related to Title II program. And this finding is related to recognition of expenditures. So there's about a two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars of expenditures recognized in twenty-five that really belonged to twenty-six. Yep. The, the recommended, the recommendation that we made to the district was just to have more training for the folks that make those entries into the general ledger, into the accounting system, to ensure that they've properly identified the fiscal year for which those expenditures fall in. Included in your single audit report is the corrective action plan that the district has provided. And that, that corrective action plan is, is very robust. I've, I've read it, I've looked at it. It will definitely correct this issue going forward. So the district will be providing that additional training to those folks to ensure that those expenditures get recorded in the proper period. So as part of our audit, we're also, as the auditor, we're required to make certain communications to the board. So our responsibility in relation to the audit is to render an opinion. Again, we'll be rendering unmodified opinions. We are required to remain independent from the district throughout our audit, which we did. So we were independent in both fact and form, so we did not make any management decisions as part of our audit process. We're also required to review the significant accounting policies of the district. We have done that. They are clear, neutral, concise, consistent. During the year, the district did implement G A S B one oh one, which is a new accounting standard related to compensated absences, which is effectively P T O, days off, earned days off. Under that new standard, we had to go back and re-measure the value of, of those compensated absences, and it resulted in an eight point two million dollar increase in a liability for those, for those compensated absences. This isn't something unique to the district. All governmental organizations had to adopt G A S B one oh one, which resulted in this increase in their valuation of these compensated absences. We did not identify any difficulties throughout the audit. We did not identify any uncorrected misstatements. We did not have any disagreements with management. As part of our audit, we asked management to sign a representation letter that they were truthful in all the information that they've provided to us. They, they were able to give us that representation letter, which then led us to issue our opinion. And management did not go out and seek consultation with other accountants. So effectively, they didn't go seek a second opinion for a conclusion that we reached as part of our audit. So we'll also just kind of quickly go over some of the numbers. We'll focus here on the general fund, so that's the primary operating fund of the district. We'll look, what we're looking at here is a table, a graph for total revenues of the general fund, which totaled six hundred and sixty-three billion for F Y twenty-five. F Y twenty-four, your total revenues were six hundred and seventy-nine million dollars. So we did have a decrease in general fund revenues year over year. We can see that local revenues did increase slightly year over year. That's related to property value increases. We can see that your state revenues decreased pretty significantly. That's about a twenty-six million dollar decrease from last year. And then the federal programs remained pretty consistent year over year. But again, net year over year, about a sixteen million dollar decrease from the, from the prior year. Next is a slide that shows the general fund expenditures year over year. F Y twenty-four had seven hundred and fifty-nine million dollars of expenditures, and F Y twenty-five here has seven hundred and nineteen million. So again, we saw a decrease in expenditures as well as a decrease in revenue. So those were both moving in the same direction. As you can see, the instruction line is the largest expenditure within the district. I'd be very concerned if there was a different functional category that was the largest expenditure in your general fund. You did see an increase of about thirteen million dollars year over year within instruction, and that's largely related to payroll costs. You can see your school leadership, guidance, general administration were all very comparable year over year. Those are the types of trends that we look for. And we saw very consistent movements across those categories. Slight increases, again, primarily related to payroll costs. There was a decrease in facilities, maintenance, and operation. A large part of that decrease was the district decided to self-insure for property insurance, and that resulted in about a six million dollar savings this year. So that's the, the decrease you see in expenses in facilities maintenance, is that savings from your insurance premiums. And then there was a large decrease in facilities and acquisition construction, and that is directly related to the completion of the Thorn Stadium. Another measure we look at when we're doing the audit is we like to compare your general fund to budget to actual. So how did the actual results compare to your budget? So total revenues were six hundred and sixty-three billion dollars, which were more than what the final budget was by about twelve point seven million dollars. So you had a positive variance there in your budgeted revenues. Large portion of that is interest earnings. So the interest rates remained high, so you earned more interest on, on your available funds. Total expenditures of seven hundred and eighteen million were less than the final budgeted expenditures by about nineteen point nine million. So again, another positive variance from, from your budget. Again, when we see those decreases in expenditures, again, it's driven largely from like the savings in your insurance premium cost for going self-insured. And then we look at fund balance. So your fund balance did decrease by twenty-seven point one million dollars this year. However, that is less than what was originally budgeted for a ninety-eight point one million dollar decrease. So you actually have a positive variance there of about seventy million dollars from what was originally budgeted. Again, the, the budget was also amended several times throughout the year from this original deficit for changes in management's estimates of what the activity in the current year was going to be. But again, when we look net-net budget versus actual, across the board, you did have positive variances. We also did identify that the district had about twenty-seven point nine million dollars in revenues from land sales. And another measure we like to look at, probably one of the most important ones, is looking at how much unassigned fund balance does the general have, does the general fund have compared to operating expenses? So right now, the general fund does have about five and a half months of operating expenses, which well exceeds T E A's kind of general guideline of ninety days or three months. So, you know, being a June fiscal year end, it's important for the district to carry a large unassigned fund balance in your general fund because you're not going to get those property tax revenues until January. So you need to have that cushion to carry your operations from, through, through year end until you start collecting those property taxes. So again, very, very healthy. As a board, you know, the, the key words here are the unmodified and the no material weaknesses. Those are the things that really kind of set you apart from other districts that do have, you know, findings related to their audits. Again, the, we ask a lot of questions as part of our audit. The great thing about it is you have a great team, they have lots of answers. We always get our information timely when we're requested. So just want to give a, a quick thanks to the accounting finance department for doing such a great job and helping us throughout the audit. Happy to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Any questions from the board at this time? Dr. Garcia?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Booker. I, I did have, I have several questions.
Uh, I, I did have, I have several questions, but I want to begin with, uh, the statement about the compensated absences.
Yes, yes ma'am.
I had a question that I'm going to ask later in, of human resources related to that, but could you elaborate on that a little bit more? What, what exactly is that and what is the liability to the district again?
Sure, so there's, um, there's always been a, a, an accounting standard that existed to go out and measure these compensated absences. Um, but prior standards required you to only account for those folks that were basically vested in their days, vested to get paid out, um, when they retire or leave the district. Well, under the new standard, it kind of throws vesting out, and it says, go look at everybody. Go look at everybody who has earned days and value what they're more likely than not to use during their employment at the district. So when we do that, it really broadens the scope of the compensated absences values that we have to go re-measure, and that's what caused the increase, uh, of the eight-point-two million dollars, is brought, the broadening of that standard to evaluate, um, all employees, not just those that are vested in their days off.
Okay, and what is the relationship of that to retirees?
So that include, well-
Let me clarify the question. If someone retires, I understand that we have, uh, a policy in the district that allows them to, uh, to, to get credit for their unused sick leave.
That's correct.
In other words, they're compensated for that in addition to just retiring. So what is the effect of that on-
So it also adds people that aren't set to retire. It, it broadens the population of the, of the days we have to go measure. So it used to just be, we would just look at those folks that have met the criteria to retire and get those paid days, to now including everyone within the district.
But when, when retirees would then receive that after they retire, but when do the others that are not vested or, or about to retire, h- how is that compensation done?
So it's just a, it's basically they're cashing in a day for, they're, they're not working, but they're going to get paid for that day, and that's what we're valuing. What's the value of the day they're not going to work but still get paid?
Okay, but are they in a-
So it's not true cash, but-
That's what I was going to ask.
It's a day cashed in effectively.
Okay, but they could, they could cash in?
If they meet the, if they meet the requirements, uh, the policies within the district to receive cash settlement.
Okay, all right, but they wouldn't, I mean, that they would, they either defer it and get it at retirement or get it as it goes through.
Or they use it as a day off, as a paid day off. That's correct.
All right, so I had that question, and there was also, um, now this is more from Mr. Momani in the finance group. On page five-hundred-and-five are the financial highlights from the audit. Um, and, um, I think that would be an important, uh, starting point for the board as we begin to look at, uh, budget preparation for twenty, uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh, and workshops. Uh, it, um, offers us the highlights about the, the, um, deferred outflows and exceeding liabilities and the net position and how that decreased from current operations and, um, comparisons to the previous year, preceding year, and the unassigned fund balance. And I, and I know that you, that you mentioned, and it's a good thing for the district to have, one, earned the interest to have, you know, actually received more revenue and that our expenses were less, but nevertheless, I think that this is a good look for us, Mr. Momani.
I do, I do agree, uh, Dr. Garcia, that is a good starting point. Um, we have begun the budget process, and, uh, so as we go through, uh, presentations, we'll also make sure to center it, uh, around those highlights, um, more specifically for the general fund.
That's right, thank you. And then are there, I know you mentioned also the corrective action plan.
Yes ma'am.
So is there any reason, you, we've outlined the, the training, the staff training, and is there any reason for us to be concerned about any-
No, and I'm glad you, you brought that up. So, yeah, just to clear, to clarify, so there's really no immediate or, um, negative impact to this. If anything, what it is, is just, um, identification of an area for improvement. Um, but this does not affect your first rating, this does not affect your bond rating, um, it does not impact how we evaluate the district from a risk standpoint. Um, just, just an area of improvement, um, that we've identified through our testing procedures.
All right, thank you, thank you for that. Uh, so the only other thing I would add, uh, Dr. Booker, Dr. Goffney, would be that I hope that our new board members will receive a copy of the fabulous, wonderful. Okay, thank you.
Any other board members? Okay, I see none at this time. Thank you for the information.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And thank the finance team for all of your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you for that, uh, Madam President, so we can, um, go to your-
Okay. Right, now we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the Aldine ISD resolution to cast votes in the election to appoint two directors to the Harris Central Appraiser District Board of Directors, and I'll read the explanation. In September, the Aldine ISD Board selected two nominees to be candidates for the Harris Central Appraiser District, better known as HCAD Board Position. Martina Lamont Dixon, currently serving on the HCAD Board, and Melissa Noriega, also serving on the HCAD Board. The district has now received a certification of ballot from the chief appraiser with five candidates, including Ms. Dixon and Ms. Noriega, both appearing as candidates. Pursuant to the voting entitlement calculation based on the district's tax levy, Aldine ISD has forty-eight votes. So now it is our job, we have a ballot, and I can tell you the names on the ballot, you may see them. We have Martina Lamont Dixon, Bea Fraser, Jason Morris, Melissa Noriega, and Ann Williams. So as a board, we can distribute those forty-eight votes amongst any of these candidates. We can choose one, or we can choose several, as long as they add up to forty-eight. And we have to have this done before December the fifteenth, and so I'm thinking, we have to do it now. So does all board members have that information, the ballot?
Yes, so we're ready for discussion?
Yes, we are ready for discussion.
Okay, um, since we have already recommended the two, uh, I would think it'd be appropriate for us to split the forty-eight votes among the two that we've already discussed and recommended.
And Dr. Garcia, can you remind the board of the two?
The two that you read, uh, a little earlier, uh, Martina Lamont Dixon and Melissa Noriega.
I would also like to encourage the board, uh, Ms. Ann Williams has done a phenomenal job. Being a board member, she's always present, always supportive, so I would like my rec, just for me, uh, her to be considered in some of the forty-eight votes. I have no problem with Ms. Dixon or Ms. Noriega, but I would also like to add Ms. Williams.
Is that Ms. Williams from Egg Leaf?
Yes.
Well, then I would change that to three, split the forty-eight three ways.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree with that.
Okay, with the three. You do, okay. Ms. Avalon? You have any? Okay, Mr. Mead? Okay, so we're good with it? So we're looking at about sixteen, about sixteen votes apiece, right?
And he said Aldine math. But you get math.
Yes, about sixteen votes apiece if we split it equally amongst the three. Board is in agreement? Okay, so we're nominating Martina Lamont Dixon with sixteen votes, Melissa Noriega with sixteen votes, and Ms. Ann Williams with sixteen votes. All right, thank you. See how we work together? Yes, Ms., uh, Dr. Garcia? Okay, we're good? Okay, let me make sure, so I'll give that information to Ms. Lawyer. Okay, the second item that I have is the Board of Trustees' Activation of Nomination And this is the, uh, Nominating Committee Procedures. Designation of Nominating Committee. The Aldine ISD Board Nominating Committee is one of two standing committees under the board's operating procedures. The board president appoints the nominating committee. Based on past board customs and practices, it consists of three board members. Upon appointment of the committee, the board president selects the chair of the committee. Right now, the standing chair is Mr. Randy Bates, and also a member is Mr. Paul Shanklin. The responsibilities, the nominating committee is to submit a slate of nominations for the following offices for which elections are to be held annually at the December board meeting, and that is for president, vice president, secretary, and assistant secretary. The nomination process, the committee should solicit from the board whether any individual member is interested in being nominated for a board officer. It is best practice for the committee to contact each person who expresses interest and those whom it wishes to nominate in order to obtain his or her acceptance of the nomination and assurance that he or she will serve in the specified office if elected. It should be noted that members of the committee are not barred from becoming nominees for office themselves. The committee will deliberate to determine a final slate of nominations. While it is common for a nominating committee to submit a slate of nominations with one nominee for each office, the committee may nominate more than one candidate for any office. If the committee is unable to reach consensus, consensus on a nominee or nominees for a particular office, the slate should be presented without a nominee for that office. So at this time, I'm reminding all board members to look closely, um, at the offices and also to contact the chair, which is Mr. Randy Bates, if you are interested in being the president, the vice president, the secretary, or the assistant secretary. And, Mr. Bates, the deadline, next week?
Next Friday would be fine.
Okay, by next Friday.
Five o'clock.
By what time? Five PM, which is the end of the business day. If you can contact Mr. Randy Bates, either by phone, text, email, to let him know, or in person, if you would like to be considered. And then at that time, the nominating committee will meet and bring that information to the Dr. Garcia, you had a comment?
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, it, it does, uh, indicate up at the top of the, um, nominating committee designation that consists of three mem, three members. Are you to appoint a third member?
No, ma'am, I would leave it as the standing, which is the chair, Mr. Bates, and also Mr. Shanklin was already on the committee.
Okay, so you're-
So we're just going to leave it as two.
You're going to leave it at two and up?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the other question that I had is, is, is next Friday, um, Thanksgiving week, or is that the week before?
Next week is Thanksgiving week.
It's Thanksgiving.
Is that-
Friday is the twenty-
Could it be the week after that?
Sure.
The next Friday is what?
Next Thursday is Thanksgiving week.
Next Thursday's Thanksgiving.
Okay.
It's going to be a busy time.
So let's say Tuesday the twenty, let's make it Tuesday the twenty-fifth.
Yolanda sent out a reminder.
Tuesday, twenty-fifth.
Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, and that would also include any nominations that come from the, the new board members that will be sworn in-
Yes, because they will be sworn in tomorrow, so it, it includes the three new-
Okay, that gives them more time.
And then four standing.
Okay, that gives them more time as well. Okay.
Any questions from the board? Thank you.
Okay, and Dr. Booker, uh, that concerns the nominations for the offices of, for the officers of the, of the board. I did have a follow-up question, it's sort of related. Uh, there are, uh, when the school district developed the Aldine Education Foundation, the board developed that, and there are bylaws to that that indicate that there are two, uh, members of this board that are elected by this board to serve there. Will we be doing that? Is there a timeframe for us to do that later in January or-
Yes, I think we were talking about after we give the new board members a chance to go through the-
New board orientation.
The new board orientation, so we wanted them to be clear on everything that's going on and not just, not include them. We didn't want to just put-
Sure.
-everything on them, so it was going to be done decent and in order.
Okay, so there's a timeframe, January, February or so, do we have an idea when that might be?
January.
Okay, and do they meet monthly? How, how frequently does that board meet? Monthly, so there would be an absence of, uh, board members from that board, uh, December, January, or until the, this board decides the two representatives for that, uh, foundation board?
Yeah, especially with the election and the turnover, this board is just-
Yeah, sure, no, 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 I understand, I was just asking.
Yes, ma'am, but we're going to do as quickly as possible. Ms. Avalon?
Yeah, yeah.
I can, um, let you know that I, but, and both Connie and I plan to stay on the, uh, AEF Board as members.
Okay. Thank you for that information.
Okay, and then the only other one that I am aware of is I know that the, that the state law a couple of years ago required a safety committee, and that there is a board or board members-
Mm-hmm.
-on the safety committee, and I don't know what the implications of that might be as well, and I don't know if there are any other, uh, um, councils or, or groups that are sitting board members participating. I just am aware of the foundation and the-
Safety, that's all, that's what we have, yes ma'am. We'll put it all on one sheet.
We'll arrange all of that as well.
Yes, uh, myself and the superintendent, we have already discussed in how we're going to proceed with the new board members coming on and knowing that information.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you. Any other board members? Thank you. Okay, moving on. All right, I'm excited to hear from the academic office. Dr. Cantu?
Good evening, Dr. Booker, Dr. Goffney, and Board of Trustees. My agenda begins this evening on page sixty-five. Uh, my name is Fabiola Cantu, and I'm the chief academic officer. So, uh, my agenda begins on page sixty-five with the approval of clinical experience affiliation agreement with West Texas A&amp;M University and Aldine ISD for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. This is an inter-local agreement which requires board approval, and so this agreement would, um, partner Aldine ISD with West Texas A&amp;M University's Speech Language Pathology Program, and it would allow, uh, for the speech language pathologist students, uh, to have clinical experience, um, observation, and supervised training, um, in our schools, in our, in our Aldine schools, under the supervision, of course, of a licensed speech pathologist. And so, um, I'm recommending the approval of the clinical experience affiliation agreement with West Texas A&amp;M University and Aldine ISD to begin in January twenty, uh, twenty-five, and then continue into, um, can continue up until twenty-thirty, um, so as long as we can, uh, continue that partnership with this, uh, university. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? Okay, I see none.
Okay, wonderful, this concludes my agenda.
Thank you. Right, we're going to keep it moving with the school's office. Dr. Villaria?
Uh, yes, good evening, Dr. Booker, Dr. Goffney, Board of Trustees. The school's office agenda starts on page seventy-six. Uh, this month, we have one consent agenda item. Uh, we are seeking the approval of the twenty-twenty-six baseline application for funding to Avance Houston for the Aldine ISD Head Start program. Um, the supporting documents also include, uh, a list, an outline of the, the funding, which would allocate over five million dollars to serve as a delegate of Avance Houston so we could continue providing the Head Start, Head Start program services, uh, starting in January. Are there any questions regarding this, uh, board item?
Any questions from the board? Dr. Garcia?
I don't have, uh, questions about the application itself, but I do want to understand if there were any repercussions, um, uh, because this is federally funded. Was there any impact on our Head Start programming during that, this government shutdown?
Uh, yes, so, uh, from what I've been told, no, but I'm going to let Tia Kala Davis, our director of Head Start, the one thing that she did inform me, uh, from her meetings is that, uh, we are guaranteed the, the funding, it just may come in a little late. I don't know if, Ms. Davis, you want to clarify that?
Can you say your name for us?
Yes. My name is Tia Kala Davis, Director of Head Start. Thank you for your question. Our funding, uh, we've received the notice of funding, which is the letter that you have in the package. Um, now that the government shutdown is concluded, uh, or extended, um, we are going to, we anticipate having that, uh, notice of award, the actual funding letter in December before the Christmas break.
There's also a possibility of, of something else happening in January, and that the, the shutdown ended but is in effect, uh, the restart is only in effect until another discussion in January.
Right, once we receive our letter, we will have more information whether that, um, grant, um, the award notice, I'm sorry, is for just the, um- the award notice, I'm sorry, is for just the, till January or until the end of the grant period, which would be December thirty-first.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
Any other board member? Okay.
That concludes the school's office agenda.
Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to the school improvement and student support services. Mrs. Melendez?
Good evening again, Dr. Booker, Dr. Goffney, and the Board of Trustees. I have two items, my first item begins on page one eleven, and this is a interlocal agreement and an approval of amendment to the memorandum of understanding between Harris County Public Health for the Community Health and Wellness Division Chronic Disease Prevention Services through September thirtieth, 2028. So this is our partnership where they come out and work with us with physical education, healthy eating. The amendment is the original agreement only was limited to certain zip codes, this will now expand it to allow us to serve all the schools in our zip codes. Are there any questions regarding this item?
Any questions regarding that item?
Okay.
I see none.
Then my next item is on page one fifteen, and this is the monthly discipline report. Are there any questions related to that item?
Any questions from the board? Dr. Garcia?
Yes, I do have one question on page one hundred and sixteen. There, I see an increase in behavior events, and so I just am seeking clarification. At the bottom of that gray section, there is the 5.55% of population. Is that the total population, or is that the population that is?
The percentage of population that has received a discipline infraction.
So it's a percentage of the total population of students? Okay, so, all right.
So 5%.
Okay, and, and because we have less students, we have more incidents because the students?
No, it doesn't, the number of students doesn't necessarily reflect the incidence, so what I do is I go in, if you all recall last year, September, August, and October, usually we have an increase in discipline as students start getting familiar with school, so that's a pattern that's been the last three or four years. And then as I shared last month, what we're continuing to work on is Incident Code 74P, which is responsible for about 80% of this increase, which is cell phones. So as we're continuing to work through that and students with their cell phones, as we go throughout the year, we should start to see that taper off, but it's, the majority is coming from cellphone usage.
Thank you so much.
There are no other questions, that concludes my two items.
All right, thank you. Before we go on, I just would like to thank Dr. Goffney, anytime we have questions from the board, if you contact Dr. Goffney about any of these items, tell you, she gets with the, the team, the leadership team, and we get the answers. So I really want to thank the, the leadership team for being available for all of the questions because they do get answered on the spot, and so I really appreciate that. I had a lot of questions about Head Start, and within three minutes, I had all the answers that I needed, so I really thank you for that. So it's not like we don't have questions, we do have questions, we just go through the department, and we are also talking about a system that we can have for the board to make it where, and we'll let you know about that at the board training. So I just want to thank you for that. Transformation Office, Dr. Bustillos?
Dr. Booker, before he presents, could I just add to what you were saying? It would be very helpful, I don't know when we begin to not receive the board book until the week of, or the Friday, or the, I know that the dates change according to, to the period expanding from seventy-two hours to now receiving notice to the public or sending notice to the public on the Thursday, but we, and even in our operating procedures, it's a statement that we, the board should receive at least a preliminary board book two weeks in advance of the meeting, and in the last couple of months, we have not received a board book until the week, the weekend before, and for some of us, in order to get information and process, we may not have time to do what you are suggesting that be done, to go through the board book and have time to ask the questions in advance.
I'm not sure what's happened, because nothing's changed. Yolanda, have we changed the release, or what happened?
This week, for example, we didn't receive it until Thursday, I believe, Thursday is when it's posted, right? The, the meeting is posted, but it has been true for the last couple of months, I think, that we've gotten, so we haven't had the two-week period that, that is recommended in our board operating procedures.
I had no idea.
But we could review it and see what happens.
I haven't changed anything.
Thank you for that, Dr. Garcia. Transformational, did we do that? Hello?
Good evening, Dr. Booker, Dr. Goffney, and members of the board. Agent Bustillos, Chief Transformation Officer. Tonight, I have two items to review. The first item starts on page one eighteen, and the first item is the approval of the interlocal agreement with the Harris Department and Department of Education and Aldine ISD Case Debate Program for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. This is a yearly agreement we have been bringing to the school board. We're bringing it earlier this year, this also goes to the board on their side as well once it's approved here, and this goes to students, to the teachers that are serving as a speech and debate coaches at Blansin, Eisenhower, Davis, Arthur, and this gives the teachers additional dollars, up to $2,500, for competing and taking place of events throughout the school year, so this is an in addition stipend that the teachers received, and this is something we bring back to you all every single year. Are there any questions?
Any questions? I see none.
Okay, my second item starts on page one twenty-six. This is an informational item on district optimization, and I'm gonna move to the podium. Okay, so district optimization is something we started talking about two school years ago, and here we are in year three. One thing we spoke about two years ago is that this would be a yearly conversation, depending on our conditions and our environment, and looking at enrollment and our state of our buildings, and so we're gonna pick up with year three today to talk about what we have done in the past two years, what we're at today, and what it'll look like moving forward for this school year. And so we have talked about why optimization is important to the district and understanding how making the best uses of our resources to move the work forward, and in understanding, we have some good examples that we've learned from the first year, we got better the second year, and what will look like for the coming year, so we want to talk about like what to expect as we go forward in the process. This slide right here declining enrollment shows where we started in 2015, and this is not a new slide, this is something you've probably seen every time I've come up to talk about district optimization. In 2015, the peak enrollment was 70,000 students. If you fast forward to 2019, we were at 67,259, and then we had the COVID year happen, so we went down to 63,000, 63,302, and then as we went forward in the process, we went down to 60,000 in 2022. We ended the school year at 56,000 students. This summer, we lost about 4,000 students, and we're at 52,176. As you've seen the news in the media and you heard Ms. Melendez speak about the political dynamics that have happened across the nation for immigration, we also continue to have low birth rates. We also know that we have charters and private schools in the area, that number has not really fluctuated as much as us losing students to them, we've actually saw an increase of students come back to Aldine, we probably gained about 1,000 students back in pockets over the last few years for the programs we're running in our neighborhood schools. So a lot of this is to say that we are continuing and addressing it, and that's why we're bringing district optimization again for conversation this year. On the right, we have lost about 25.6% of our enrollment since 2015, 2016, and it's important to point out, last year when I gave you that number, we were at 20%, so because of the high increase of enrollment last year in the summer, that number has gone up 5%. So just to let you know where we're at this year. We've also talked about the shift of the kindergarten cohorts. Again, this graph is something that we've shown the previous years as well, although last year we did see a slight increase in birth rates, it's still the second highest, lowest birth rates over the last few years in the district, so we're still getting the same amount of students that are enrolling throughout the district, so as though the kindergarten cohorts start to shrink, we will start filling it up in first, second, and third grades over the year. So we had a large middle school class about five years ago, those students are now starting to graduate, so we're starting to see our numbers smaller in the elementary rooms, and then also we'll start seeing that impact in the middle schools in the next two years as well. So we will continue to work and recruit students for our kindergarten programs, we have the three-year program that's full day, we have our pre-care enrollment festivals that we run throughout the district, and then we're also looking at potential partnerships to help bring in additional students earlier into our district with our daycare centers throughout the, the district, so we're looking at those opportunities right now to help build capacity within those centers and send them to Aldine moving forward. So what we have done in the past few years is that we've come, we've talked about district optimization that is here tonight, over each month, I'll come and give a district update and where we're at in our current states. We'll develop priorities and apply it to the districts, we've, we'll talk about those matrices that we've used, they'll be the same as we continue in this process. We'll come to you, we'll give you some initial recommendations based off the numbers that we have, the building conditions, enrollment, and then we'll have our board workshops. We'll come to you all, we would like to do a board workshop in December to talk about where we at today, and then we need your feedback. You all gave us sound feedback over the last two years and recommendations and where we can take them, how to think, and then we learned, we needed to do a little bit additional work, we got more feedback from our community members, and then we'll come back in January with additional board workshops to tell you what we found, what we heard, kind of shape those decisions, and we'll come back again to you in February, and so we want to follow the same playbook, it's been pretty successful, so I want to go back to that process, so we can get voiced throughout December, January, and February, so when we bring back to vote, you'll have all the information you need as we move forward in the process. Once February happens, every day does count, because once we go do the communication, we like to give a white glove service to the schools, the teachers, the community, bring them back in to see the, the facilities and the new schools that they'd be attending, and then getting teachers their boxes and items to move to their next location. So we've been pretty successful the last two years, that every day that we started the first day of school, every teacher had their desk, their materials, every student had a desk and seat, and everything was ready to go for instruction, so it was business as usual for us. So the conditions that we've used and priorities the last two years will be the same this year as well, facility utilization and condition, you know, what does it look like for the number of kids in the building and the facility condition, like the rating of the building, is it a good standing building condition for learning? We'll also look at the financial data, the cost of the, of the buildings and students in there and how to run, and then we talk about family choice. Again, when we talk about family choice, this is not our choice schools, this is our families staying in the district or picking up and leaving. As you've seen, we've heard from the demographic for the last few years, the urban sprawl, the kids and families who are picking up and leaving, the boundaries, no new home builds for communities, apartment complexes that have come offline because of the weather, hurricanes, and, and so those are the conditions we're looking at, and then as they move out to those areas as well. And then student readiness and looking at our academics as we will go through students to see where the schools stand in that process, so these are the exact same four, nothing's changing, those, those will be the conditions, so it's a level playing field in the process. So I want to go back and look back and show you what we've done the last two years as a refresher. Two years ago, we came to you all, we had about probably fifty-six recommendations which came to you all, we went down to about thirty, we went down to twenty, we came to sixteen, and then we brought nine to you all, and then we finally came down to six. So over the board workshops, we heard brief feedback, we heard the community, and so we went forward and said, okay, moving forward, our final recommendations that came to the board were to close Conley, Gray, and Salmon's, and then we did a middle school boundary shift and rezone students from Teague to Lewis, Stovall, and Aldine, shorter bus rides, closer to their homes, and those were the options that we took. So in the February vote to school years ago, these were the schools in action the board took, so just a refresher of what that looked like. Now this past year, as we went to the board workshops and we got some more information, we did an additional step and we did some community engagement, so you will see here, these are photos that we took at the locations where we hosted at Johnson Elementary, Smith, and Eckerd, and you can see in many of you were at all of these events, that there were full houses, we had a lot of parents and students and faculty and staff who actually attended, so we were able to serve and hear the concerns and questions, get information out to families and capture their data, so we will continue this process, and whatever process in schools come out next, and so we'll get that community engagement and we'll help shape that recommendation and come back to you all as well. Last year, we came back with several recommendations as well, there was the approval to close Stovall Primary and, and the Santiago, also Eckerd, Raymond, Olson, and Smith, and then we also took out Dunn, I'm sorry, let me go back, and then at Dunn, we did the boundary change because they were over capacity, so we had to get them below the cap, capacity, so it kind of helped us get that process to move another campus to fill it up as well. And then we also did not go forward with, to close Hoffman, so that option didn't go forward, and then we also talked about Ike Nine, we moved Ike Nine to Ike Senior to do the Carver build for the Bond project, and so Carver is at the Ike Building, so we did not have to build, we call it temp portable, so we would have had a field of portables and it would have cost about $5 million, so we had a cost saving by actually using our buildings that we have capacity in the process, so that was last year. So what's now, what's gonna happen? So you heard me talk about some lessons learned that we've done, processes that get better, and so we are gonna follow the same blueprint. We're gonna come back to you all, we review and reintroduce this, we'll develop some plans to bring to the board at our Ford, our first board workshop that we hope to do in December, we'll propose these optimization recommendations, we'll review it with this team, we'll come back and shape it from what the committee, information we get, and information with enrollment, building conditions, and the four matrix that we gave. We would like to again do two additional board workshops in January with you all, a fourth board workshop in February, and then the board meeting, the exact same format as the last two school years, so there's option to give us feedback throughout that process, and then in February, we'll come with the final recommendations at the February board meeting. And then again, right after that, in the last two years, after we've done the board vote, the very next morning, Dr. Goffney and our team goes to each campuses and talks to the faculty and staff to let them know how the process went, what's their next steps. The human, human resource team actually went the next following days to start meeting with teachers and getting their list of potential placements and their options where they would like to go, so we want to run that blueprint again this year, so that's where we're at for district optimization, for, this is round three of what we're looking at, and as we continue to look at a district enrollment, we'll continue this conversation each year as we need to go. Are there any additional questions at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mead.
Do you have a feel for how many schools that will come up as your initial suggestion? Seven, eight, nine, or whatever?
No, right now we are looking at, because we lost the number of students this summer, it actually changed what we were looking at from last year slightly, so as we determine those numbers and building conditions, we don't have an exact number right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mead.
Dr. Garcia?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Booker. I'm looking, and, and your slides are down now, but at the four priorities that have been used previously, I agree that I think that they've been, we've been successful in doing that, but I want to ask a little bit about the opportunities that we have and that we will continue to have in regards priorities three and four. I think that for the others, the facility utilization, the condition, I think that in the last two years, that we've really addressed those schools that were in greatest need of rebuilding, support, age, and all of that, and in terms of financial data, we do know that, you know, a fuller building is more economic than a building that has very few students. So in that regard, I don't think we can do as much about priorities one and two, but I want to encourage us to have discussions as we go through this process of optimization to try to do more to improve on priorities three and four. I know four, we talk about every month, this is how are we doing with our students, how is the achievement going, and, and all of these other factors that we've discussed, attendance and all of that have to do with improving, improving that, so I think that we are focused pretty much already on priority four. However, I think that priority three, I don't believe that we have done as much as we can to try to retain some of those families. I know that we've talked very briefly, not deeply enough, I think, about strategizing on marketing like charter schools do. I think as new subdivisions open, new homes are open, new areas for growth are expanding in our community in, in limited ways, I know, but still, we have an opportunity to go to each of those doors and say, you know, an elementary close to you, Aldine ISD, or use various marketing techniques, and, and we don't need to discuss them here, but I'm just proposing that we have an opportunity here, I think that some of the loss that we have has been explained, we all We all know what some of those reasons for loss are, but in some cases, it's just sad that we talked to community members to say, that have said and continue to say, oh, I'm not sending my child to an Aldine school. They live in the same home, they choose to go elsewhere. And I think that we need to work as a board, as a community, as an administrative group on what to do about that, to strategize, to plan, to discuss more deeply about what those reasons are that parents are choosing to keep their parents away from Aldine schools, choosing other options, and what we can do about it. Because there are other, I think I shared with you last year at, I forget what the session was, but A-leaf Fiesd, he was doing tremendous work on that sort of effort. And I think we have an opportunity here that we're missing just a little bit on. And I really would like for us to do some work on improving the choices that families are making and trying to retain them in our district.
And to that, Dr. Booker, didn't you reach out to A-leaf?
Yeah, so we did. I just wanted, to that point, A-leaf actually reached out to us. And so the plan that A-leaf Fuse was actually built off our framework. So they're actually replicating most of the things we are doing in A-leaf, so we shared with them. But I took the note here and got that down here to look at that as well. But I will-
They have a very strategic marketing thing that we don't do. And that was the thing that caught my attention when I attended that session. But anyway, I think collaborating with other districts that have improved, there are districts that have improved their loss of students in some way. And I don't think we could just have to raise up our arms and say, well, we're done. Enrollment is, you know, decline in population or whatever it is. I think that we need to put out a bigger effort on attempting to retain the families that live in our district but are choosing to send their kids out.
Absolutely. We'll continue that process to go there. And just a few notes, we're doing geo-fencing around, like at charter schools and areas around. So like when parents go and open their phone, you see Aldine ads start popping up on there. So that's one thing we've done as well. We've actually expanded our social media ads on X, Instagram, Facebook. Some people, Mr. Shanklin, don't use Facebook anymore. I'm just going to say, there's newer people. TikTok as well. So we're trying to rebrand on some of those areas. But yes, I got that written down here, so we'll continue to work and work with communications to get that.
And so let us be clear as well, we're working with districts across the region and as well as districts across the state. There's a convening that's coming up, and across the country, actually, there's been some virtual opportunities that are looking at the urban core. But one of the things, we're sending a team, a couple of people to meet with districts across the state because in light of everything that's happening with other, no, we just have to say it, immigration and all of that, what can we do? Because a lot of parents are keeping their kids home. And so we got to figure out about a virtual experience. In addition, you'll hear about when we discuss the constraint, because we've talked about customer service, and that's one of the things that charter schools very well. And so we've rolled out a different plan, and you're going to love it, Aldine promised, and it's already taken off. We have superintendent ambassadors, parent advisory, they're serving as secret shoppers on our campuses and getting some great feedback so we can continue to improve our customer service, as well as the different marketing strategies that we've been able to do. And so I think the more conversations that you know, so when you hear other people say they're doing it, many times they got the ideas from us. So we're doing it, we're just not telling everybody that we're doing it. We need to do a better job of sharing that with the board and then taking ideas from the board. Because I've gotten ideas from conversations with you all, and we certainly appreciate it.
Absolutely. And we did have a choice festival two weeks ago, and we actually had 300 more families this time around than last year. So we know we're trying to get a bigger reach, more events out there. And any time you have an Aldine event, you'll probably see a choice school and Aldine out there as well. So we're trying to get more in the community on that. So I took those notes down, Dr. C, so we'll continue that work.
Just a question I have. I know that we have been using the priorities, and I'm not saying change them or anything, but my question is, as we keep going through this process and as you're saying, we're learning each time, are these the priorities that we need to continue to use or do we need to add more? Are we good with just these four?
Yeah, we're pretty solid on those four right now. I think if we get improved, it's more on the process so we can accelerate the work faster. So yes, we believe these are the right four measures, metrics to use.
That's it?
Okay. That concludes my board items. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Accountability assessment and analytics. Dr. Rodriguez?
Good evening, President Booker, Dr. Goffney, members of the board. My agenda items begin on page 140. I do have three items tonight. The first item begins on page 141. Annually, we are required by TEA to bring the campus and district goals and performance objectives to the board for approval. This process is a collaborative process. It actually started in June where campuses received their data, they reviewed their data, they convened a team and worked together to think about targets for the 25, 26 school year. And the district did the same. What you'll notice is at the beginning of last year, when we rolled out our new strategic plan, we got a tighter alignment between the strategic priorities outlined in our strategic plan, the Lone Star Governance Goals, and superintendent constraints, and then campus strategies as well. And so after looking at their data and having conversations, we met throughout the summer. They did a comprehensive needs assessments, determined their strengths, their weaknesses, their opportunities, and then went into the development process. I did share these in board communications. I believe I started sharing them at the beginning of October, and so we're bringing them for your approval tonight. Are there any questions on the district and campus goals and performance objectives for the 25, 26 school year?
Are there any questions from the board? Dr. Garcia?
Thank you, Dr. Booker. Yes, I mentioned it years ago, I think, that there's too many for, you know, for us to review each and every one of those from each of the schools. So I just want to maybe perhaps re-ask the question I may have asked it before, of assurance that the goals set by each of the individual schools, of course, align with the district-wide goals that have been set. And I see, as I glance through, that they do. But the larger question is the representation and the development of those local school goals, the representation of teachers, administrators, parents, community members, partners within the community in establishing those goals.
Yes, ma'am. So every campus forms what is called, at the district level, we have the DEAC, but at the campus level, they have what is called a CEAC, a Campus Educational Advisory Committee. Before the plans are even brought to you for approval, they must have a public meeting. So members of the CEAC go to the meeting. It's the, the meeting date is posted on the campus website. They convene the campus. They do a presentation on, here is the state of the campus, here are the priorities for the 25, 26 school years, school year. Are there any feedback that the community would like to provide? And so all of that is taken into consideration for the development of the plan. In addition, the CEAC, which is made up of, which is made up of the campus administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, community, and parents, they meet on a quarterly basis to review progress towards the goals that they've set. And if they're making progress, maybe adjusting to a more challenging or a stretch goal. If they're not making progress, looking at the strategies in place and are we, do we need to tweak some of those strategies? And so yes, that is an ongoing process, just like we do at the district level through the DEAC.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
And so is that information also with our, what are they called? I'm sorry, the assistant superintendents? What are they called?
The school assistant superintendents.
They have meetings with the principals over the campus improvement plan, right?
Absolutely. So at the district level, on a quarterly basis, we have what are called data deep dives. And so my team facilitates those meetings. And in those meetings are the school assistant superintendents, it is the campus principal, the campus assistant principal, the campus testing coordinators, the instructional specialist. And we also, at the district level, sit as a team and say, let's look at the district data, let's look at your data, here's how you can go into systems, what are we noticing? Are there patterns and trends? How do we plan to adjust? And so we guide them through that process at the district level. And then they turn right around and have an even more in-depth conversation at their campus level. And so that also happens on a quarterly basis. If there are no other questions on that agenda item, my next agenda item is on page And annually, also required by TEA, we are to bring targeted improvement plans and turnaround plans for campuses identified by TEA to the board for approval. Because of the accountability reset in 2023 and some of the lawsuits for accountability 23 and 24, the timeline has looked a little bit different for the last two years. But we are bringing them back in November as we have traditionally done. And so we have been, we have been communicated with by TEA that the following campuses are required to submit a tip to the board for approval. And those campuses are Cypresswood Elementary, Davis High School, Francis Elementary, Harris Elementary, Kajawa Primary, because it is paired with Kajawa Elementary for accountability, Ogden Elementary, Plummer Middle School, and Stellic Elementary. I do want to remind us that when I shared the accountability data in August, we talked about campuses that were rated comprehensive. And campuses that are rated comprehensive are required to put together a targeted improvement plan. Now, I know some of you are probably looking at this list going, Cypresswood, why is Cypresswood Elementary on the list? Because they're a B campus. Remember, I shared also with you in August that we had 19 identified, 17 made progress, 10 fell off the list, but we're still required, if you look across the board, with the exception of one campus, all of those campuses made progress from 24 to 25. But because it's a requirement that you stay on the list for two years, they continue to be on the list for the second year. So we are optimistic based on the accountability data from 2025 that they will come off the list after the 25, 26 school year. So those are our targeted improvement plans. We also have our turnaround plans, and we have been notified that Aldine Middle, Caraway Elementary, Dunn Elementary, Grantham Middle, Hoffman Middle, Lewis Middle, Smith Elementary, and Stovall Middle are required to submit turnaround plans. And so the first one I want to address is Smith Elementary. We do know that that is a closed campus, but because they had two Fs, and then they improved in 2025, because we closed them and they had prior two Fs, what we're required to do is submit a plan saying, where did the kids go and how are we going to support them? You'll also see that Dunn Elementary is on here, Caraway. All of these campuses made progress from 2023 to 2025. But again, if you have two or more Fs and you don't receive that C rating, then you have to create a turnaround plan. And so these are the campuses that are required to create the turnaround plan. If you'll notice in both the turnaround plans, we were required to post those, so we posted them on the district website. What you'll notice in both the targeted improvement plans and turnaround plans is the strategy is the same, curriculum and instruction improvements. And that is going to be done, I know Dr. Cantu shared with you earlier this year, through the instructional playbook and our three priorities, right? We talked about making sure that we're preparing for instruction, we're monitoring and supporting, and we're responding to the data, and then outlining how specific we're being in our CBPLs to make sure that we're internalizing lessons. And then specifically for our turnaround plans, which we talked about earlier this year as well, we have restructured our Opportunity Schools under Ms. Melendez. And we have assigned two school assistant superintendents to strategically support our Opportunity Elementary and our Opportunity Middle Schools as well. Are there any questions on the targeted improvement plans? Are the turnaround plans for Aldine ISD?
I do have a question. We're anticipating that more schools are going to drop off the list. When would that list be updated? Like what month does that come out?
So the list won't be updated until accountability comes out in August. So they'll have this rating for the 25, 26 school year. And then when accountability ratings come out in August, mid-August 2026, right alongside that is when the list for comprehensive, targeted, and turnaround plans comes out.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Dr. Garcia?
Thank you, Dr. Booker. So help me distinguish more specifically the two, the tips and the taps.
Sure.
So the taps is more severe in terms of, in my head at least, in terms of outcomes or the repercussions for not satisfying an expectation that would be included in these plans that are being developed.
Tips are based on federal sanctions, so it is the comprehensive based on Domain Three. Taps are based on state ratings and so required by TEA. Tips are a one-year process. Taps are, could potentially be a two-year process depending on your accountability rating. There are, if you look at the questions that were asked in both, they're the same exact questions. But what TEA expects to see in a turnaround plan is the focus on monitoring and supporting, which is the structure of the Opportunity Schools and making sure that there is a more consistent meeting and discussion of data. But what I will say is, all of our campuses, regardless of whether they're Opportunity Schools, are using the same data trackers, having the same cadence of meetings. And that's how we were able to see such tremendous progress from 23 to 25 in our accountability ratings was because of the systems that we put in place with preparing, monitoring that instruction, immediately responding to data, and then following back up and making sure that we were actually moving. And so taps are a longer process, and they require more strategic monitoring. But if you look at the way that we developed the tips, it's the same monitoring process that we're using across the board because we were able to see the 12-point gains, right, in accountability from 23 to 25, because we know that monitoring and supporting and then responding to the data in a timely manner is what's going to move outcomes for our students.
Yeah, let me ask it a different way. So when I think of taps, the turnaround plans, this is the state accountability system, and I tie that to Houston ISD and the more recent announcement about Fort Worth ISD. Is that the process that the state uses? Is this part of an indicator that the state uses? In other words, whatever the, is the criteria that the state is using against Houston ISD, Fort Worth ISD now, this? In other words, how many years of non-good performance has your district had?
It's part of the process, but it's not the entire process. So we don't have any campuses that are, at this time, in danger, anywhere near that five-year mark. That five-year mark is where the commissioner has the decision to determine whether or not the district needs to head in a different direction. So we do, we do have campuses that are, you know, more than, they have the two Fs. But again, putting the systems in place and monitoring those through the turnaround plan, what TA hopes is that you implement the plan and then you see the accountability rating change. Now, I will tell you, if we run through the list of the campuses that actually have taps, and we shared, Aldine Middle under new leadership, Caraway reopened as an ace campus, Dunn Elementary was right there. They actually had some of the largest gains, but they were a force D. Grantham Middle, again, had tremendous gains, right there at a 68. Hoffman, new leadership, Lewis, new- new leadership, Lewis, new leadership, Smith closed, Stovall, new leadership. And so we did take a, a good, long look and evaluate where the campus was when there, when 2025 accountability came out to say, how can we restructure and provide even more support? That being said, these campuses did grow from twenty-three to twenty-five. We even talked about, they weren't, even though they were an F, they were a forced F. So if you actually calculate the accountability rating for the campuses, you would, it actually calculates out to a D. So just paying closer attention and making sure we have the right people in the right places and monitoring the right data to ensure that we continue to see that growth.
Okay, just one final question. So even though all of these schools follow the plan that Dr. Cantu has shared with us, these campuses receive in addition to what everybody else in the district does, the additional support that you mentioned from Ms. Melendez and her team, that's the additional support, the, it comes almost directly from, from that initiative.
Correct. And there are some opportunities through grant funding, through Lasso III and Lasso IV for School Action Fund to not only Ms. Melendez and team really fine-tuning the support that they're providing, but also partnering with Untappd Genius to help even, even further support the instructional playbook. So having partners that are TEA vetted and aligned with the work that TEA pays for to come in and also support when Ms. Melendez get beyond every campus at every second. Yes, ma'am?
All right. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no further questions on this item, my final item is, begins on page four twenty, and that is the update on the twenty-five, twenty-six enrollment. And this is what is shared in Board Communications Weekly. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? I see none.
If there are no further questions, that completes my portion of the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, we're going to, before we move on, Dr. Goffney, I just wanted to, just to ask you to do this for us, the board please, comment that Dr. Garcia brought up. Can we just look into that information that was sent to us from August to November in a timely manner? The board book, can we just check?
Oh, absolutely. I'm getting a little bit of clarity on the situation. And so what we'll make sure is the first upload, the team has heard it, we'll make sure that everything is uploaded during the first upload. What's happened, many times there's an MOU or there's some type of interlocal agreement that we're waiting to get the signature on. And so what we'll do is make sure and communicate that in the email. We'll be able to say, okay, this item will be on the agenda. The only reason we're not sending it or uploading it at this point is because we don't have it. And so I think Ms. Dewatt, I think we get, we'll be able to move and get everything uploaded quicker, quicker with that understanding. Because a lot of times they're waiting on some information from another, another entity that keeps us from uploading it. But I figured out the, I figured out the missing piece.
Thank you. It's always very clear when we receive it two weeks in advance that it is a preliminary agenda, understanding that there are some documents that are not --
We could even do that, upload what we have, the understanding that this is draft or something of that nature.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Can you hear me, resources? Ms. Marcy Herrera?
Good evening, Dr. Booker, Dr. Goffney, members of-- Name is Marcy Herrera and I am the Chief Human Resources Officer. My agenda begins on page four twenty-four. I have four items this evening for the consent agenda. The first item is the agreement between the University of Texas at Arlington Educational Experience Affiliation and Aldine ISD. This item is on four twenty-five. And so what this is, is the ability for us to have folks, teachers mostly, who are working on their counseling certification. And so it's kind of like student teaching, but for counselors. And so this is at no cost to the district. It just gives us the opportunity to allow that clinical experience for those folks. Right now, we only have one employee in the district at one of our primary campuses that will be able to take advantage of this particular agreement, but the agreement is good from November of this year through November of 2030. So lots of opportunity there. The second item is memorandum of understanding between Texas A&amp;M and Aldine ISD. This is not a, a new MOU. This is a continuation of an MOU, also for student teachers. And so this particular MOU will be good from December of 2025 through December of 2026, again at no cost to the district. The third item is the approval of the affiliation agreement between Stephen F. Austin and Aldine ISD. This particular agreement is again for student teachers and will be good from November to twenty-five to November of 2030, again at no cost to the district. My final item for the consent agenda is the MOU between Rice University Education. This is the Susan M. Glasscock School of Continuing Studies and Aldine ISD. So there is a newer certification available and it is for K through three. Rice University is one of just a handful of education preparation programs that offers this particular certification preparation, and they have some scholarship monies from Houston Endowment. And so our, some of our folks who are looking to get that certification already in district can take advantage of that scholarship opportunity. So this is at no cost to the district, but this allows us, this particular MOU will allow us to take the remainder of their EPP fees directly out of their paycheck, just to make that a little more convenient for them. Next, I will move on to my information items. The first is on page four fifty-one, and this is the recommendations to TEA for career and technology education local teaching permits. So the board is accustomed to see in these every year, sometimes each semester. This month, we have nine teachers who have fulfilled their local requirements to get locally certified, and so we'd like to take those to, to TEA. My next information item is the benefits update, and this starts on page four fifty-three. For this particular presentation, I'm going to go ahead and transition to the podium, and I will ask that our CFO, Mr. Mamanji, and our executive director of Total Rewards, Mindy Smith, if they'll join me at the podium. So we'll all be available to you. Okay, so as my colleagues make their way up to the podium, just want to remind the board, we've been talking about benefits every couple of months for the past few years since I have come into this position. So I'm going to start with an overview, if I can make the clicker work. So I just want to, just want to let you know how our plans are performing right now. So right now, we are self-funded, and what happens is between our broker and our, and the provider, the medical provider, Aetna, and our pharmacy provider, we get data on how our plans are performing every quarter. So right now in November, what we have are, is complete data for the first three quarters of 2025. Now, just as a reminder, our fiscal year for benefits is January through December. So this doesn't include, you know, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of odd because it doesn't run with our school year. So just as a reminder, a reminder, this is from January until September. So right now, our medical and pharmacy program through this first nine months is running about 4.7% above budget or at 104.7% of the projected costs when compared to where we were last year. So to kind of put that into perspective, the total plan cost right now per employee per month is about $746. Last year at this time, it was $677 per employee per month. So that's about a 10% increase. And remember, all of this is driven by claims. So when I'm talking about claims, I'm talking about people who go to the doctor for everyday things, but also people with some larger, more, more critical issues like cancer, like COPD, things like that. Our enrollment, our enrollment from September, the September 2024 to September 2025 did increase all of our plans overall by about 2% with about six, 500 and, 5,000, sorry, 5,698 average employees enrolled. So the reason that says average enrolled is because it could fluctuate from month to month depending on new hires and maybe some life events where folks add some dependents to their coverage or take dependents off of their coverage. An example of that is next year, my son will come off my coverage because he's going to turn 26 and I'm not allowed to cover him after that. So that's, that's how those numbers can kind of vary. 2026 challenges and considerations. So of course, we've been talking on a regular basis about the rising healthcare costs, not just in Aldine, not just in Texas, it's across the entire nation. Also chronic conditions, high claims, pharmacy costs. This past year, our health fund budget had a shortfall of $2.5 million, meaning that the monies that we were collecting from employees from their premiums and the money that we were contributing to the health fund per employee who was participating was not enough to cover all of our expenses. So we had to pull out $2.5 million out of fund balance in order to, to balance the health fund budget. Considerations for 2026, which we're going to get into a little more detail in just a moment, is we are looking at TRS. We've been talking about that. We're looking for any kind of savings we can possibly come by in order to mitigate the losses that we've been experiencing for many years now as, you know, with being self-funded. So two months ago, we looked at different ideas from different brokers, made sure that we were realizing as many of those savings as we possibly can, knowing that moving to TRS should save us about $7.5 million. Right now though, just to be clear, right now, we are still self-funded and we will continue to be self-funded at the minimum through September 1st of 2026. So we're not talking about moving to TRS immediately. We can't even do that. But in order to make the decision to move to TRS effective September 1st, 2026, then we have to give notice of that election to participate to TRS by December 31st, 2025. So that decision has to be made way in advance. So as a reminder, a TRS active care overview. TRS active care is a little bit different than how it used to be prior to, prior to COVID and a little bit after COVID. So the, the premiums are based upon regions across the state. So there's no longer one particular cost for all school districts in the state of Texas. It is now regional, based regionally. And so obviously, we're in Region Four. The current medical vendor for TRS is Blue Cross Blue Shield with the benefits manager being ExpressGrips. So Blue Cross Blue Shield is the largest medical provider in the state of Texas right now. They're also considered by many to be the most powerful. But having said that, TRS is out at RFP right now. So they follow some of the same strategies that, that we follow here being self-funded, which is every few years, they go out to market and say, we know that, that, that Blue Cross Blue Shield may be a great provider, but can Aetna do any better? Can healthcare highways do any better? So right now, they're at RFP, and one thing they're doing differently last year compared to the last, or this year, sorry, compared to the last time they went out to RFP, is they have asked for the different carriers to bid on each different region in the state. So it could possibly be that Region Four goes with, say, Blue Cross Blue Shield because they gave the best rate for Region Four, but Region Six could be with Aetna, because Aetna was able to give a better price for that particular reason. So I'm encouraged to see that step from, from TRS, because that's one thing about being self-funded is that you have that ability to go out to market based on what's best for the claims in your particular district. So although we would be part of a greater region, knowing that they're looking at the pricing to that specificity is encouraging to me. Of course, the different things that, that are looked at when, when the different providers will bid on the business with TRS is they're going to look at claims. And so one thing that we have discussed many times here is our claims are high. Our claims are high, but by pooling with a much bigger, I'm sorry, by pooling with all of the districts in Region Four, it makes those high claims a little less heavy because everybody's sharing the weight of those higher claims. So we're, we're sharing that weight with all of the other districts and even some charter schools. TRS employs a variety of strategies. We've already talked about that a little bit, accessing market-leading discounts through particular vendors, offset cost with rebates, and, and so we're already doing that. They're doing it too. Navigating participants to low-cost, high-quality options for care. They have wellness initiatives, just like we do here in Aldine, and management steps for drug utilization spend as well. So to give you an idea what it looks like across our particular reason, region, 63% of the charter schools and districts in Region Four are already with TRS. Thirty percent at this time are, are not with TRS, and then we had that 7%. That 7% there, the yellow, those are districts who left TRS three or four years ago, but they have lobbied the legislator and asked to come back in before their five-year period is up. So there were, there were some districts that left, and when they went to be self-funded, they, they found it to just be too heavy financially. And so they went to the legislator during this particular, this last session and said, can you let us back in early? That's that 7% right there that's looking to come back in. And so the market share for TRS is likely to expand beyond that 63%. I don't have a crystal ball. I'm just telling you what, what it looks like could eventually happen. The TRS networks, as we have discussed before, are broader than what we currently have because they're with Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they don't have the, the same type of arrangements that we have. So of course, we have Kelsey Care, we have Memorial Hermann, and then we have what's called the Texas Medical Network. All of the doctors that currently work within our three plans are also covered by, by Blue Cross through TRS, meaning that if we were to move to TRS, our employees would not have to get new doctors. They would still be covered. So they could, they could keep the same doctors that they currently have if that's what they would like to do. But it's also going to make that network more broad. So let me give you an example. The parents in our district who want their, their children to require, to, to get their pediatric care through Texas Children's Hospital, well, that's obviously not covered by, by Kelsey Care, and it's not Memorial Hermann. So the only choice our employees have right now is to go with our high deductible plan through the Texas Medical Network if they want that care through Texas Children's. That would not be the case with, if we were, if we were to go to TRS with the current plans they have right now, parents would have the ability to choose from three different plans that give them access to that particular network of doctors. So that's what I mean when I say they have, we have, our employees would have more options. TRS's Least Rich Plan is richer than Aldine's plan designs with the, with exception to the Kelsey Enhanced Plan. And Mindy can give you a little more information on that if you would like it. TRS's Richest Plan, Primary Plus Employee Only. The total premium is $596. Aldine's Least Rich Plan, which is through Texas Medical Network, has a total premium of $656. So what this means in plain language is the savings would not only benefit the district, but they would, they would also translate to the employee. So the pros of looking at TRS active care, and we've talked about all these before, some of this, the numbers may be a little bit new, but the information is not. So if it sounds familiar, that's because we've talked about it before. But in 2023, the Texas Legislature provided $588 million to, to be poured into TRS over four years. And the reason they did that was to cap the increases at 10%. And the reason they did that was to cap the increases at ten percent. That means the increases could be lower than ten percent, but they shouldn't go any higher. The pricing based on region four pooling, there are fifty-seven districts right now that includes some charter schools. We went over that a little bit. And then, of course, House Bill thirty-one twenty-six is the bill that's, that is allowing those seven percent of districts to come back. So protection from volatility, what that means is if we went with TRS, we would no longer have to purchase stop-loss insurance. We're going to talk about stop-loss in just a moment, which is costing us almost two million dollars a year. And then also significant financial savings just based upon, you know, what our, what our current rates are with, with Aetna. And so that estimated savings, again, it would be around seven point five million dollars. The richer plans we've talked about. And then also, there's an IRS fee that comes with being self-funded. This is not a substantial about amount, amount of money, but it is about twenty-five thousand dollars a year. We would no longer be, be obligated to pay the Pecory fees. But we also have to, we have to think about, you know, some things that, that may not be a plus in everybody's book. One is if we move to TRS active care, we, we're obligated to stay for five years. So we're making that obligation. The reason that TRS does that is because they need stability with their buying power. And so if districts are continuously having the ability to leave year in and year out, that decreases their negotiating powder, power with various providers. Loss in control of managing the unique aspects of our particular plans. I know that control feels good on some level, but we have to keep in mind that control has also cost us multi-millions of dollars over the past several years. We would, if we moved to TRS, we just finished open enrollment, but we would have to go through a second open enrollment in the summer because TRS plans run September one through August thirty-one. We talked about just a little bit, this may not be a negative, but some people may find it to be a bit of a, of a pain point that TRS is out at RFP right now, meaning we don't know who the carrier is going to be. It could be Aetna, it could be Blue Cross, it could be one of the other major carriers. And then, of course, just the employees having to go through the hassle of getting new ID cards and learning about the new resources. I'm going to now ask our CFO to come up and talk to you a little bit about the financials.
Thank you, Chief Herrera. So before you, we have a comparison of the plans between our plans and TRS plans. And just a few highlights, we just wanted it to be comparable for each category, plan features, doctors, immediate care, prescription drugs, as well as the cost. So three quick highlights I just wanted to point out, for example, on the, the deductible, the deductible, our deductibles here at Aldine are much higher compared to TRS. We also have lower, higher core pays here at Aldine with our current Aldine plans. And then when we talk about the rates, this is the total rate that we pay, whether it's a split or divided between the employee and employer, but that's the monthly premium. Our monthly premiums are higher compared to TRS, and this is for the plans that went into effect next year, January for us, and for TRS that were, are currently in effect from September. Now, overall, overall, when you compare the plans, the biggest thing that we always have to highlight to you is from a deductible perspective, if you transition between one plan in the middle of a benefits year, the deductible carries. So for example, if I used my individual four thousand five hundred by August thirty-first, that deductible will also be considered for the TRS plan. So employees or participants won't have to get a new deductible amount to, so, so it's, it doesn't disadvantage them. It actually helps them that they do not have to start all over again. But ultimately, when we look at the cost, how we're able to say that the savings is about seven point three million is that we look at what is the total plan cost? And if we moved our employees to the three different plans, depending on, on the uptake of which plans they choose, that can go up to twelve million because some employees and their families may choose to go to the TRS active care because now it is a richer plan. We would only know the cost, the total cost of those plans and the budget effect in April in terms of the maximum amounts, but at a minimum, we know that collectively for the health fund savings, the savings will amount between seven million to eleven million. So I took the lower amount and said, should we move and elect to move to TRS, that will be direct contributions to the budget. Finally, when we talk about, when we talked about initially the two point five million, the two point five million that the general fund had to contribute to the health, to the health fund, it's that the health fund cannot operate on a deficit. It is not like the general fund. So we, we have used up all of our fund balance and so we had to infuse as a, as an operating transfer from the general fund. And, and that is after we had already increased our employer rates. So ultimately, we have to look at, as, as administration, we have to look at what is the net effect on the budget, financials? That is two point five million that potentially, instead of having a deficit of twenty-seven million, our deficit would have been twenty-four point five million. On the first slide, we talked about our expenses, our expenses being higher for the health fund, and that's mainly because we are, we are obligated to pay any claims that come our way. So even though we have stop-loss, we still have to pay those claims and we try actively to manage it. So one of the final things I'd like to mention is that as we look and meet with Aetna reviewing the, the pharmaceutical plans that we have, we actually have already gone in and told them for our January claims, we've done a market check, we've told them what opportunities are there for us to reduce our costs, because that's what we had from most of the brokers who said we should be doing it. And so we do that annually and, and there are potential savings of about six hundred and forty thousand. But that's six hundred and forty thousand, we still have two point five million just from this past year. So overall, it's a, it's a richer plan, it's, it's lighter in terms of monthly premiums to our employees. So we, we will see more participa, more participation from employees and their families.
Thank you, Tim. Next, I want to talk about immediate next steps. So these are things that, that we'll want to look at for December. First, we always bring a stop-loss to you, to the board in December. If you'll remember this time last year, we were thinking about just not having stop-loss. But we were worried because we had one particular claim that was over five million dollars for a little baby that was born premature, so that was a very high cost. We also had some employees who were looking at kidney transplants and then we had a couple with heart conditions, things like that. So where are we right now? That's the decision we made was to move forward with stop-loss insurance. Those premiums cost us about one point eight million dollars or will by the end of December. So right now, we have five claims who, which have been what's called completely billed and you can see those listed there, eight hundred and twenty-nine K, six hundred and forty-five, six oh nine, five seventy-five, and five seventy. We also have a claim that is in process and so are progress. And so this particular claim right now, total build is actually at seven point five million dollars, but Aetna has, has been negotiating with the provider. And so right now, the agreement is that so far, Aetna is paying two point three million. That claim is not complete and so it will continue, that, that price will go up. But because we have stop-loss insurance with a deductible of five hundred thousand, we only pay five hundred thousand on each of these claims. But to, to date, the approximate savings that we have enjoyed because of having stop-loss insurance is a net of about seven hundred thousand dollars. We are, we did go out to RFP for stop-loss insurance. We only had one vendor that, that submitted a quote and that was Aetna, who is our current stop-loss provider. Our, our, our broker did a great job of reaching out to the, the stop-loss insurance businesses out there and asked them, why didn't you submit a quote? And then it was, it was about the same answer every time, your claims are really high. And we've had two once-in-a-lifetime claims, two years in a row. And it was the five million dollar baby from last year and now we have the seven and a half million dollar, dollar baby this year as well. And so those, those high claims, that they do have an effect. So we need to decide in December whether to move forward with stop-loss insurance. We'll bring you some more financials in December to help with that, with that particular decision. Also in December, if we want to move forward with TRS, then we will have to make that, make TRS aware of that election in December as well. All right, questions? I'm sure you have, you have some, some things that, that we can answer now. And I'm also happy to go back and do lots of research and bring back everything you need through board communications, but also at the, the December board meeting.
Okay, Chief Herrera.
Yes, ma'am.
Probably have a bunch of questions because that was a lot of information. So board members just let Chief Herrera know where, which question you're coming from, starting with Mr. Shanklin.
This is, I mean, you've covered, we've covered a lot of this information over the years, so there's really no new information, even though I'm sure there's some redundant questions about it. My question specifically is going to be about will, if we decide to go to TRS, will we still need to stop loss?
No, sir. We will no longer need stop-loss insurance because once you go with TRS, TRS assumes all the risk. So we have no more risk when it comes to high claims.
Okay. The other question I have is given what we've all seen in the national news and what's been going on with the, the shutdown and the real negotiation is healthcare, we look like we're going to revisit that in January. Have you anticipated what that means one way or the other if ACA supplements are not renewed?
It, it won't have an effect one way or the other because whether we're with TRS or we are self-insured, we have the same obligation to educate our employees as to what, what is the best thing for them or give them the resources to find that out. So our education as far as the ACA plans are concerned would not change whether we were self-funded or with TRS.
I have, I have a question.
Ms. Avalos?
Right.
Yes. Has the employee committee been, has this been shared with him and are they other processes?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And if I may, just one second. Ms. Avalos, Mr. Shanklin, if we go with TRS, that would not start until September first. So we would still need stop-loss from January, yes, through August. We, we visited, Ms. Avalos, with, with the Benefits Advisory Committee a few times last year actually on this. And the reason that TRS became such a hot topic of discussion, you know, with not just the board, but all around the district, is whenever Mr. Momani asked the district for cost savings ideas, we actually had folks on that, that answered that particular survey that said, my spouse is on TRS and the plans are richer. And so that's when we, we, we were always looking at TRS, they were always part of the conversation. But when we heard that from our own employees and, and the desire for us to look at that closely as we dug in, we shared our findings with the, with the Benefits Committee. And, and I'll tell you, their biggest disappointment is that we did not move to TRS beginning January first. But if you'll remember from the, I believe it was the Aug, September, September board meeting, I believe, is when TRS let us know that if we moved to TRS in January, we were going to have to put up some funds, which are like an escrow account, but they're non-refundable. And it was going to cost us, Tim, do you remember how many millions of dollars? About eight million dollars in reserve funds that would not be returned to us. So it would negate the savings that we were hoping for. But we have been, and Mindy can tell you more about that if you would like, but she's had many members of the Benefits Committee that have reached out and said, you know, we're disappointed that, that we didn't have the opportunity to move to TRS.
So piggybacking on, I'm sorry, Dr. Booker, is it okay?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
On her question, when, how often have they met this fall?
I'm going to let Mindy speak to that. She can remember better than I can.
Good evening, Dr. Booker, Dr. Goffney, members of the board, I'm Mindy Smith. We met three different times with the BAC Committee. The meetings actually started last May when we started talking about the RFP process that started for our ancillary benefits and we started the TRS conversation at that point in time. I think we were all, you know, we all received a lot of really positive feedback about employees that had been on TRS plans in the past. Good feedback about the Blue Cross Network, good feedback about providers, a much wider network of providers available. And really, when you look at and compare the plans and look at the pricing, if we were to keep our contributions the same or similar to what they are now, the cost savings that you'd see on the employee side, you know, would be quite significant for the employees as well as the savings mentioned by our CFO. So really, the comparison, I mean, it seems like a no-brainer when we, we've done everything we can at the district level to bring in the best broker, have the best negotiations, have the best preventative medicine available, but with the buying power of TRS, fifty-seven million members on that plan, and then the money going in from the state to keep those prices low, you really can't beat what looks like eight to twelve million dollars in savings a year that we would see by moving to TRS. So as I mentioned, we had three separate meetings so far to date where we talked about, and the latest meeting was when we introduced what the January benefits were going to be. And we did have disappointment, you know, and I immediately received telephone calls after that meeting, why, why aren't we moving to TRS? And it was because it looked like almost, I think, a forty percent increase if, if we tried to do it for January. So now the next step is pushing now where we're in this pool and we're priced with the entire pool for region four to get us to that same pricing that we're seeing region four take advantage of.
So you met in May and then you met?
We met in May, we met in August, and then we met again in October just before releasing all of the open enrollment information for January. And the May meeting was in person and then the two August and October were virtual visits.
Okay. And then remind us of the composition of the committee?
There's a hundred and eighty members. So it's every single department, every single campus has at least two members that are invited to the meetings. And we also, so because not everybody can attend, we do our best to, to schedule those when teachers can attend and everybody else can attend. But we also record all of those via Zoom, send out the meetings so everybody has the recording, everybody can give candid feedback to any, any of the content that's covered in those meetings.
I did have a couple of other questions, Dr. Booker.
Yes, ma'am.
So I, I know that we had had, and through contact with TASB, the benefits group there did work with Aldine, and I think it was Mr. Mead who posed the question, I don't know if publicly or, or maybe just in conversation, about the opportunity missed for not having had a report. TASB is a trusted organization, provides many services. So is it possible to have that benefits survey, that benefits, a representation of that opinion in, in this decision-making process that we're going through?
So I, I provided the board in September, I believe, I'll have to go back and look, I believe it was September, with the results of that report. So, so TASB, when it comes to benefits.
I'm asking, can they come? Can they present? Can they, can that entity or TASB's benefits division share with us?
That would be, I mean, that's, that's not my decision to design the agenda. It is Gallagher that represents TASB, so this is very different than some of the other studies that TASB does. They contract that out and I presented those findings to the board in, in September. They contract that out, and I presented those findings to the Board in September.
One of the, I think that one of the things that we've discussed, and you have it in your slide about the cons, is the decision, you know, making a decision, and we had discussed it before, to go with this would be a commitment for five years. And given the volatility and the discussion nationwide about health benefits, it's just, and then the assumption that you're making that it would be Blue Cross Blue Shield when really what you're in fact said is that these would be, if the opportunity presents itself, the Board votes in December to go with TRS, there's not a definitive provider. You're still going through an RFP process. So, I mean, there are just so many questions that are posed here. So the additional information provided by a trusted school board member provider, I think, would be critical for us to have in addition to what you've provided.
Dr. Garcia, can you clarify your question for me?
There are two things.
It sounds like, it sounds like we were presented that information in September, but you would rather hear the same information come from Tasby?
Well, I don't know that it would be exactly the same information, is what I'm saying.
The information that they're presenting is from Tasby, as I understand it.
Yes, it's through, well, it's Tasby through Gallagher because they contract that out. So actually, it would be Gallagher, who was actually the broker previously here in Aldine, who we separated ways with.
Okay. So we're assuming the information would be different because it came from a different mouth?
Well, we've had that experience, Mr. Shanklin. If you remember, there was information presented to us about Attentive, and when we had the Attentive, the Attentive representative here, the information was quite different.
Because it's going to be different when there's return on the investment for them. Anytime an entity is making money, like Attentive or Gallagher-
But Tasby's got money.
-it's going to be, it's going to be different. And so what I can tell you is, healthcare is volatile. You're absolutely correct. But to have that risk with 54 million participants as opposed to just ours is an opportunity for the Board to explore and perhaps could be argued as in the Board's best interest as opposed to taking on all of that risk as we've been doing. And so anyone who has an opportunity to make money is going to present things in a way that could encourage you to-
Yeah, but they presented the TRS option as well, and we didn't hear from that perspective. That's what I'm saying, is with the broader, there's a broader presentation that Tasby staff can make.
Tasby staff is not, they don't have the, they're, they are not in the business of recommending-
No, and I'm not saying that they're going to recommend. I don't want a recommendation.
Or supporting. They're going to present the opportunity for us to work with them so that they can make money.
Well, I don't, I don't look at Tasby services in that way. Tasby is there to serve, and all Board members here have gone through leadership Tasby and understand policy services and, you know, risk management services and all of those things. And quite often, even with Byboard and services like that, Tasby has given districts money back. Tasby's not in the district of, in the business of making money from districts. Having served on that Board, having been president of that Board, that's not Tasby's priority.
But I would argue that it's not Tasby's priority to determine whether or not a district goes with TRS or that may be self-funded.
That's not my question. I'm not asking them to come make a recommendation. I'm asking them to give us the broader picture that we, I don't believe, received.
We've done the best we can.
Yes. Mr. Bates?
I trust the staff. The staff has been dealing with this for some time now. Some of us, I get the feeling that no matter what staff says, that's not going to be enough. We're hearing here, saving $8 million. We're talking about an RFP coming out in the near future. There's uncertainty about that. Well, what is certain is if a RFP goes out, it's going to be at the best price that's going to win. So it's not any issue about an RFP making it difficult for us to make a decision right now because it's going to come back, no, we don't know who it is, but we know it's going to be the best price because it's a RFP as opposed to RFQ. So, Dr. Booker, if there are members on the Board that have more questions or problem, I would suggest that they do what's necessary to get those answers. But as far as I'm concerned, I'm trusting the work that the administration has done. They've been at it much more than we could possibly be at it because that's what they do. And until or unless someone says to me that there's something on their part that is defective, then I'm ready for us to move forward and get our employees the insurance that they need, that they wish they could have already had. But there has been foot dragging that has caused us to be at the place where they have not been able to get it when they wanted it. So, Dr. Booker, I move that we move forward and go on with the rest of tonight's agenda.
I do have one question. I want to know if the Board is to make a decision in December about TRS, can the future Board, which includes three new members sitting right over there, decides against it in January, February, is there an option provided by TRS to pull out of that agreement?
No, ma'am.
Before it takes effect?
The new Board members will be seated and be apprised during our orientation about the history of the opportunity, and they'll be here to vote in December.
No, I'm just asking the question, if the decision is made to go with TRS in December, that, then that's, that's-
Yes, ma'am.
No turning back?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
That concludes this particular presentation. The remaining items are the reports the Board is accustomed to receiving each month. Are there any questions on those remaining items?
Ones that you already went over?
The, the reports that the Board is accustomed to receiving each month.
I did have a question about the consent agenda items that you presented.
Okay.
I know you told us it was one employee that was taking part of the counselor.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it was three more, right? Do you have numbers on those, mind you?
I don't, but I can get those and share them in Board Communications if you would like.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any questions on the rest of the agenda items from Chief Herrera? I see none.
Okay. That concludes my portion of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to Finance. Mr. Momani?
Good evening, Dr. Booker, Dr. Goffney, and members of the Board. My name is Timothy Momani, Chief Financial Officer, and my agenda begins on page 476. Our first item is on page 477, the approval of the single contracts and purchases of over $100,000 and greater. I welcome questions.
Questions from the Board? I see none.
Okay. The next item we have is the item on the approval of the annual comprehensive financial report. That was on page 482, and that's the one that the auditor presented to us. We covered the questions that you had. I'll move on to my informational items. That's on page 652, and I'll wait for you to get there.
50.
Okay, and 652 is a regular monthly revenue status and budget analysis. We are trending as expected if you look at the general fund, which is on page 653. If you compare how we are trending compared to last year, the percentages are as expected. And that's what you want to see, that there's no variability or fluctuation. Same thing with our child nutrition fund. Despite the shutdown, we have received reimbursement for the meals that we have served. That's on page 654. And then on 655, which is our debt service, where we pay our debt, you do see that revenue hasn't come in. Most of our revenue is tax-related. We sent out the tax bills last month, and we are beginning to receive, most of our taxpayers have begun paying. So you will begin seeing increases in the revenues for the next two to three months. Okay? And then on our bond issuance, we are moving along. Planning and execution of those plans is ongoing. So we are beginning to see spending down of the funds, but not only spending down, but work happening for the different sides. Okay? My next item after that is on page 657, the quarterly investment report. And interest rates, the Fed has dropped the Fed rate, but we still continue to receive higher-than-normal interest earnings. And this is what contributed to the favorable results on our past year's financials. So we will continue investing, making sure we are preserving our funds and allowing us to have liquidity, safety of principal, and yield. Any questions on those two items?
Questions from the Board. Mr. Shanklin?
And this may be one, Tim, that you may not be able to answer. Have we calculated what is going to be our tax base, given the legislation that came out? And I'm only saying that because my tax, my personal tax bill was almost nil because of the deductions and everything, which is good personally. But, you know, looking at it on a broader scale, that's going to impact the money that we get.
Yes, I've not calculated it the way in terms of numbers, but I've calculated it in terms of revenue. So as part of the legislation that passed where the homestead exemption was increased, we voted on that last month, the constitutional amendments. The state will make up, and the state is making up for the loss of that funding. So it is good for you and me as homeowners, for the school districts, the state is making for that funding. And we know that the governor has released plans for us to ensure that the funding from state aid is maintained. So we will continue to see that.
As long as there's reserves.
Yes, there are reserves.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next item I have is on the tax, the monthly tax office report. And this is the one that I mentioned where it shows that we have begun collecting our taxes, and we will continue seeing this go up over the next two to three months. And then finally, my final item is on page 672, where we dispose of, through the auctions, excess inventory and excess items that we have that have gotten to the end of their useful life. Any questions?
Questions from the Board? Dr. Garcia?
Yes, Dr. Booker, thank you. I didn't stop when we were going through the bond funds on pages 480, 481. And I actually have a request, Dr. Booker, to make, given that the amounts here are very large, largest 6.58 million, 116 million, 104 million, pages 480 and 481, 124 million, 31 million. These are individual items, and by another one for $3.4 million. And given my rough estimation, what we're looking at on pages 480 and 481 total more than $366 million. And I have looked forward into the descriptions given later for these items, and I have expressed before my great discomfort at approving items at, at least at this amount of money. I've even expressed my concern about lesser amounts of money. But what I am requesting, Dr. Booker, is that this item be separated out from the consent agenda items tomorrow because in good conscience, I cannot approve these recommendations without the underlying justification, the underlying support items, things that I have requested before. And so the request is that these, this particular item on Mr. Momani's agenda be moved out of consent agenda for a separate vote because, as I said, in good conscience, I cannot approve expenditures of this amount without explanations, without any supporting documentation, without data. And so it's a simple request to move this item off of consent agenda.
Madam President, if I may, if you'll go to page 676, those are the items, the supporting documentation. As we're working on starting our bond projects and recognizing that we have a timeline to complete, our first mode is to make sure we determine our CMAR at risk. And so we went through our queue process, and we have Chief Washington who's here to kind of go through each one of them. And so if we, we separated it out under Chief Washington with the supporting documentation for the items that were listed over 100K, which is how it's been done since I've been here and it's my understanding before. But Chief Washington, if you'll go through each one of those and-
So, Dr. Goffney, just to not prolong this, I have looked at that, and what we have listed there is the number of applicants for the work and the names of those applicants, which is not, from my perspective and for my conscience, not sufficient information for me to make an informed decision about these items. So he can review what is in the Board book, but it is, it's not sufficient. And if you want to have him do that, that's fine, but my request will remain.
Okay. If it's okay, we can go through it for the rest of the Board members to go over each one of them.
I'm trying to understand Dr. Garcia's request. So you want this removed?
It will still be voted by the Board. The Board has every right to vote on this, but in good conscience, I do not want to vote no on the entirety of the consent agenda items, which include the memorandums of understanding and various other things that we have already discussed. I do not want to vote no on those things simply because I cannot in good conscience vote yes on this one small item that will be on the consent agenda.
So you want to vote no on certain ones and yes on other ones?
On this one, on this particular one because of the-
On what particular one?
If you look on pages 480 and 481. It would be the simplest way to do it rather than to go into each one of those separately. So it's the items on the bond funds.
For every item? The killer replacements for the-
There is still the opportunity, absolutely, and I would imagine that that will happen, that this will pass. But I want in good conscience to have a vote on the record that I cannot support a recommendation that does not include documentation, data, reasons for supporting the particular recommendations made here.
Dr. Booker?
Yes. Mr. Bates?
And I don't, I don't have a problem with page 480 and 481 being taken and being off of the consent agenda. I really don't. My question would be, could you articulate exactly what information that they could give you that helped you make that decision?
Well, we've discussed this a number of times. This is not the first time that I bring it up. From the experience, I'll look at Mr. Mead, I have served on this Board for a good number of years. And we have always previously received information about items like this that have included at least some sort of rubric that had a listing perhaps of the top three. And the reason that we're going for this third one, first number one, or number two, or number three, or not going for two or three, is this. And there is-
And there is a score, a rating score of some sort. There is justification, there is data to support the recommendation. This is not the first time that you have heard me request this. And I think it is very reasonable. It is, you know, this is not the only board I've ever served on. This is a practice that TASB uses. We've all been through leadership TASB. We all have great respect for that organization. There are other organizations that I've served on, and this is the first. I do not want to feel responsible for voting yes on an item that I have very little information about. And so it's a simple request, move it from this particular one little item out of consent agenda, so that I, in good conscience, can have on public record that I cannot support this.
Dr. Booker, I would join her on taking approval of single contract and purchases 100,000 be taken separately as we prepare the agenda for tomorrow.
Not a problem. I'm just trying to understand, as the board president, what's the one little simple item? I'm hearing what you're saying, Dr. Garcia, but I'm just, what little one simple?
Let me repeat. If you look at the amounts of money, Dr. Booker...
I'm looking.
You're looking, look at the third one on page 480, that's 6.5 million. The next one's half a million.
Yes.
The ones on the next page are larger, 116, almost 117 million dollars. And all we know is that this is to that vendor and that it is for a construction manager at risk. And if we go to Mr. Washington's report, all we can see is that there were so many others and their names. And I have no other information about why this particular...
If we could go through...
...vendor is the best of all of the ones that... And I don't need to know the information right now. My question right now is not to delay this. I'm asking simply, as respectfully as I can, that I do not feel comfortable accepting a cost of, as I calculated, as I said, these two pages alone are over $367 million.
I got it. I was just making sure respectfully that I understood your request. So I heard what you said. I was just trying to make sure that I understood what you were asking.
Okay. And, Dr. Booker, if it's okay for us to go through each one, because what you're going to learn is that guaranteed maximum price is for the construction of Carver High School. So the money is not going to the vendor. What happens if you allow us to go through each one of them, then you'll see what each one of them is, and then we can do as Dr. Garcia and Mr. Bates.
Just for clarification here, there are at least three that are a construction manager at risk. So there are no windows, there's no cement, there's no building material when we have construction management at risk position. There is no such other thing as we have, there's three of those. And then there are architectural services, again, which is not money that is going to go into the actual physical building.
If we could go through them, then go through each one of them.
Just for clarification.
Yes. Can we move ahead and go ahead and go through these? Is Dr. Washington coming in?
Dr. Washington and his team are coming in.
Dr. Booker?
Yes, Mr. Mead.
Dr. Garcia, are you looking for RFPs? Are you looking to compare the RFPs?
No, it's too late for that tonight, Mr. Mead. What I'm simply asking is that we take this item, move it away from the consent agenda, so that I, in good conscience, can go to bed tomorrow night and say, I did what I felt would be the right thing.
We will, we will definitely do that, okay? So what we're going to do right now is we're going to walk through each one of them. If you'll come on up, Mr. Washington. We're going to start with maintenance, the 22333 for the Texas Air. No, you want them separated. They'll be separated that night.
I'm not asking if we're talking about the whole...
Wanting to put the vote off.
Just wanting to vote no.
Putting the vote off.
No, no, I'm good with that. I just want you all to be informed.
I don't have a vote.
Okay. But to go through each one of them. But for the record, because of what Dr. Garcia has just stated, I want to make sure that if anybody is watching, that they understand the process and what they're saying is a guaranteed maximum price, that it's not going to a CMAR, that that is the cost of building the high school and so on and so forth. So if we can go through each one of them, just to make sure everyone understands. And we have new board members who are listening, I just want to make sure that we have, if you have good information, you can make a good decision. And so we want to make sure that there are no assumptions or nothing is miscommunicated. So we can go through them quickly, the ones that cost less, and the ones that cost more, we can just go through those.
Good evening, Dr. Booker, Dr. Goffney, Board of Trustees. I'm Fred Washington, Chief Operations Officer. And my agenda starts on page 675. The agenda is for informational purposes, and it supports the over 100K document presented by Chief Mumaney during his presentation. I'll just go through each of the items briefly. I have with me Ms. Pearl Lane, Executive Director of Facilities Planning and Construction, Mr. Herb Harris, Executive Director of Maintenance, and some of the other members of the team. The first item, excuse me, the first item listed is the, all of these items, let me clarify, all of these items are specified items from the 2023 bond package. So any item that you see listed here is listed as an item that we were supposed to address as a part of the 2023 bond. Excuse me, I might need some water, my throat is dry. But the first item is a chiller replacement and installation at the following campuses, thank you, Bussy Elementary and Houston Academy. That vendor was selected from the maintenance contract, 2023-33, for the chiller replacements. There are multiple vendors that are able to do that, that are on that contract. But what we do is to try to speed up the process and to have multiple vendors working at the same time. You see multiple vendors outlined. So, but this group was selected for these specific campuses. The next item is a chiller replacement installation at MO Campbell, same scope of work as listed above. But the selected vendor was Hydronic Piping and Welding, again, specified in 2023. The next maintenance project specified is a Phase II roofing replacement, an overlay project. You'll note that we had multiple schools identified in 2023 bond. We've been at the scope of work for roof replacement for several months. This is the next project in the line. That item is listed at $6,583, but I bring to your attention that that is not one of school replacement. It is multiple schools. The schools listed are Coward Elementary, Impact Leadership Academy, Kojawa EC Pre-K, Carroll Elementary, Keeble, and Thompson Elementary. The next maintenance item with Hydronic Piping and Welding is the boiler replacement at the following campuses, Keeble, EC Pre-K, and Reese Academy. The next items are from Facilities Planning and Construction, Construction Manager at Risk Services for the rebuild of Carver High School. I want to clarify that the Construction Manager at Risk is actually responsible for building the building. The cost you see there is the guaranteed maximum price to actually build the school. So the CMAR that was selected will hire a variety of subs, other contractors and partners, and they will develop and design, not design, I'm sorry, the architects design, and then they will manage construction for that specific facility. The next is Dramala for Construction Manager at Risk for the Education and Performing Arts Center. That, again, is the guaranteed maximum price to actually build the facility. The third in that row is the Construction Manager at Risk Services to rebuild Aldine Middle School and Lane School. Again, that is the guaranteed maximum price to actually build the school and all elements and components of that school. So the projects that we have outlined are turnkey projects, so the school or the facility will open ready to do business. The next three items are our next projects that are going out, Construction Manager at Risk Services for the rebuild of the East Transportation Center. That is the last CMAR that we are proposing at this time. And you will recall that we had four projects. We had the first three projects, and the transportation center caught up with those. We were able to move it along faster and catch up. And this is the Construction Manager at Risk, again, outlining the guaranteed maximum price for the construction of that facility.
Dr. Washington, before you go on for the CMAR, will you go through the process of how it was determined to go with those CMARs that were selected?
Yes, ma'am. Did I bring that up? So the, I have it earlier. So the Construction Manager at Risk selection, our procurement process is the same just about for all projects. We have basically a 15-step process. The first step is to develop an RFQ specification that is led by the facilities team. We then meet with the legal, external legal partner to review those documents before they go out to the public for response. Following the internal review and approval, that RFP package is submitted, provide, I'm sorry, we provide the approved RFQ documents to the purchasing department no later than one business day prior to the first scheduled advertisement. We have the public advertisement. The advertisement is posted for five days. Prequalification meeting and site visits are then scheduled for those who respond. The site visit happens within seven business days following the first advertisement. There's a period for vendor's questions. We establish a deadline for the vendor questions, that is nine days after the date of the first advertisement. Following the receipt of those questions, we have a period where we issue an addendum based on the written responses from the vendor. The statement of qualifications at the submissions deadline is provided. The statement of qualifications are due 14 days after the first advertising and publication. That list of respondents is evaluated and shortlisted. The Aldine ISD Evaluation Committee reviews and scores all submissions over the 15-day period to identify the firms to be shortlisted. After the shortlist occurs, notification is provided. The purchasing department, by the purchasing department, to the respondents for their selection. We request pricing, preconstruction costs, GC costs, and CMAR fees. We schedule interviews within five business days. After finalizing the shortlist, interviews and evaluations are then take place. That is scheduled over a five-day period following the interview date. Final rankings are provided to the purchasing department, which they compile all evaluation data, establish the final rankings of firms based on the publication of an RFQ criteria. After selection is finalized, at that time, contract negotiations take place. The Facilities Planning and Construction Department and outside legal counsel initiates contract negotiations with the top five ranked, I'm not five, I'm sorry, with the top-ranked firms based on the final rankings from the procurement department review. Negotiations will occur over 10 business days or until a mutually agree-upon contract is achieved. And then that recommendation comes forward to the board for review and approval.
Now, are any of these new, I know Dramala is built, you want me to quit asking questions? I just want to make sure that for the people who are watching, that they understand that this is a very strenuous process and that everything, all eyes are dotted, t's are crossed before a recommendation is brought to the board.
Yes, ma'am. This is a very thorough process that each vendor goes through a series of reviews, provides data in several different categories, their financial data, their financial capacity, their history. They are screened by that committee. Their submitted work of recommendations are reviewed, evaluated, and responded upon based on that data. So this is not a new process to the district, and it is the process that the district follows for all reviews of requests for proposal, contract negotiations.
Okay.
If there are questions on specific vendors, I do have the team available who can speak to the qualifications of any of the vendors identified or outlined here.
Mr. Mead has a question.
When the bond was first presented to us as the board, was it each one of these categories listed what it was going to cost us? Each school, everything was listed what it was going to cost? Is any of these numbers that we're getting now, are they more than what you told us they were going to be?
No, sir, all...
We knew upfront what it was going to cost us for each project. They told us upfront where we could vote on the bond, where we could say, go for it, okay? And so I'm just wondering, have we not seen this before? And if you're telling me that we're not charging anymore for what project you brought to us, I don't have a problem, because we approved it then.
Mr. Mead, to respond to your question, all of the projects that I am presenting here today are specified within the bond package that we sent out, one of the three propositions. And they are below the threshold that was identified in the bond.
I have no problem with that, except I do, I would like to see, when we come with projects like this for the board's view, that we get to see all the RFPs that did come in on that particular project to see if they're in line with what we said it was going to cost, as proof that that's what it was. But I do remember y'all bringing it to us, that what each project was going to need, what the maintenance was going to cost for each school, what Carver was going to cost. And I'm okay if we don't go over what the board approved at that time.
Yes, sir.
Are there any more questions or comments from the board? And we'll get that, we'll get that done for tomorrow night.
So I would like an answer to my request.
I just said we'll have that done for tomorrow night. That's what I was just saying.
You're going to separate out this bond?
We will have that done for tomorrow night for your request.
It won't be on the consent agenda?
Any board member, any other board member?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we was on...
That concludes my agenda.
Thank you. You coming back up? Okay. Would you like to add anything? Okay, I guess, Chief Cardova, Police Department.
Good evening, Dr. Booker, Dr. Goffney, and members of the Board of Trustees. My agenda begins on page 681, and it includes my regular two items, District Police Activity Report and the TEA Intruder Detection Audit Results. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Chief Cardova? I see none.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief. Legal Department, Ms. Kay DeWalt.
Good evening, board members. My name is Kay DeWalt. I am the General Counsel for the District. My agenda begins on page 693. I have two consent agenda items, and both of those are release of liens where the judgment against property where there were delinquent tax cases, and those judgments have been satisfied. So we are asking for you to allow us to file notice of release of liens in both of those agenda items. Any questions about either of those consent agenda items?
Any questions from the board? I see none.
All right. For the next item, I will actually go to the podium.
She really is, she really is. She normally judges everybody else when they go to the podium, so everybody's judging her right now. Speak clearly. Talk into the mic. They got you fast. They got you back.
All right. Okay, how do I do the clicker? There we go. All right, Board members, tonight we have the long-awaited Update 126 from our Tasby Policy Service. As you know, we had the 89th Legislative Session that yielded lots and lots and lots of legislation that impacted how we do things at school districts. And one of the biggest changes was with Senate Bill 12. It impacted every area of school district operations. One of the biggest areas was our grievance policies. And as you can see, there are three types of grievance policies, and they impact different groups. Employees, and that is at DGBA, and citizens and public, cit, public, um, complaints, that is at GF Local, and then students and parents at FNG Local. And we have experienced two of these on more frequent occasions. We have had very few parent, I mean, uh, citizen complaints. Uh, we usually are able to resolve those without it reaching the Board level. So I want to go over the revisions to all of those policies, but the very first panel that you see right here contains the revisions that are going to impact all of the other policies. So I want to go over those details with you first. The deadlines are big, a big part of where the revisions lie. For Level One and Two hearings, and you'll hear me call them hearings, we usually refer to those as, as conferences in our current policy, but the legislature decided that they want to call them hearings. Um, they, they don't look like hearings, they're really, they really are conferences, but they refer to them as non-evidentiary hearings. So you'll hear me refer the, for, refer to them as hearings. So there is a 10-day, 10 calendar day. Previously, in the policy, it was business days, but it is now 10 days, 10 calendar days that we have to have that hearing. 10 days of receiving that complaint or receiving the appeal to Level Two. Then there's a new item called a remand, which means that the Board at your Level Three, you can send a grievance back to any level, to Level One or to Level Two. You can remand it back. So basically, even the superintendent can decide that it doesn't matter if the grievance is not on the right form or came in a day late, which, this actually is a practice that Dr. Goffney has, uh, this is putting in policy what her practice has been. Uh, we have not had, um, especially when it comes to parent grievances, if there's something defective about the form or if they don't have it, uh, filed in the right place, that she's been very lenient when it comes to that. So this basically puts in the policy what our practice has been. But what it does provide is that the Board can send back a grievance to a different level. Notice of complaint, which means that if an employee is the one who's being complained about, they now get notice of that complaint, and they have an opportunity to provide something in writing to include, be included in the grievance, and that follows the grievance all the way through. The Level One and Two decisions now, there's a deadline of 20 calendar days after the hearing is held. Previously, that was only 10, it was 10 business days, but it's 10 calendar days. And notice I keep saying calendar days. If it falls over Thanksgiving, then we have to count those days. But also, it also provides that the parties can have a mutually agreeable date, so, um, that can also happen. So it does encourage that the parties agree if there's some, if this is not convenient or if it falls on the weekend and so forth, they're able to work through getting those deadlines met. Appeals, that is when the employee has to turn in from between Level One and Level Two and Level Two and Three. They have 20 calendar days from the time that they are, the decision is communicated to them or when the deadline was supposed to happen. Also, contrary to what the current rules are, the employee can add new information anytime prior to Level Three. And even at Level Three, any new information can be provided. So there's only one caveat, is that before the Level Three hearing, each side has to give five days' notice of any information that's going to be provided to the Board. So that is the only caveat. Up till this point, that was, you couldn't provide anything new. Everything had to be whatever was filed at Level One, that's what followed all the way through. Now, that is different. The timeline for the Level Three hearing is 60 days after the Level Two decision. So we have to make sure that we get the hearing into the Board before 60 days. So that's basically two regular Board meetings. We have to get that Level Three heard. The Board, this is something new. The Board can now delegate the grievance hearing at Level Three to a Board Committee. Um, the Board Committee, you have a question?
Mr. Shanklin.
Yes, I, I wasn't clear of whether or not the committee is making the, the final decision or that the committee brings back a recommendation to the Board.
And that's a good question, and it is not clear. The statute doesn't say that, and it's, so I believe that the Board can decide how they want the Board Committee to operate. They can decide whether they wanted to make a recommendation, or they can decide whether or not they want the Board Committee to make the final decision. So there was no prescription for that. All right. The employee decides if the Level Three is open or closed. That's something that we do in our district. We allow for the employee, we do that already, so we have that in our practice. And then the Level Three decision, uh, has to be made no later than 30 days after the Board hearing. Our Board is in the practice of voting and making that statement in open session. You can either continue that or decide if you want to make it at a later date. So those are global changes that are throughout all of the three different types of Board policies on our different, um, policies. So, uh, y'all note that I had to look down to find the arrow to move, so y'all can write that down. Okay. For our grievance policies for the public, you'll see that in the GOE writing, those are the same, we have the same revisions. It's just a different policy, it's in a different place. There are some nuances about this policy that are different from the others, but those changes, there were no changes to those nuances. So we rarely have complaints. Like I said, we try to make sure if we have complaints from the public, that we take care of those. Uh, we have, um, some of our neighbors that we know that come and talk to us sometime, but we are able to work things out with them, so we don't have to get to this stage. All right. Our parent policy, the biggest change here are the deadlines for filing. I call this our 30-60-90 rule. In 60 days, that's the general rule, when the parent has knowledge of the issue is the deadline. And again, that's the 60 calendar days. However, that period is extended if they're involved with informal resolution. So if there's something that the parent is working on, either with the campus or a department, then that time period is, is extended for 90 days. Or it's 30 days if a parent walks in the door and asks the principal, "I want to file a grievance, how do I do that?" Then they have 30 days from the time that the principal provides that information. So that's the 30-60-90 rule. Everything else is pretty much the same. You see, all of that list is all the same, and it's all 20 calendar days, 10 calendar days, and we have to keep that in mind. All right, any questions so far about the grievance policies? All right, okay. Now, there are other new things that go along with our, our policies for grievances, but they all have to do with transparency. We have to post our grievance procedures online, and that's going to be automatic because our policies are online. But we also have them in our employee handbook and also in the parent-student handbook. They're already there. We already had those published before we even had our Update 126, so that's no problem. We also have an electronic filing system because we have a way for parents and for our employees to file electronically. So all of that is already done, and we just have to make sure that we provide those links to T E A. The other, um, new feature is that annually, we will provide a report to T E A of the number of grievances that are filed, uh, here in the district. That's a new feature, we have to do that. So I guess you, you have to tell T E A, and I believe we are saying that's going to be through the P E M system, we're not quite sure yet, but, um, that has to be done. And we have to also give how, uh, if we resolve any of those early, we have to make that report as well. And T E A is going to report this data statewide by December 1st every year. So that's all new, and all that's required under Senate Bill 12. Senate Bill 12 was expansive, so throughout your materials, you probably saw lots of references to Senate Bill 12. All right, that's it for the grievance requirements. There were some other major, uh, policy. I'll remind you that we have now to report three business days to post our Board meeting postings are three business days as opposed to the 72 hours. And that was a major change for us as we are preparing for the Board meetings. Also, you already feel the changes about the public comment. Everything has to be at the top of the meeting, so we no longer have the two places for the public comment, that it's all at the top of the meeting.
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to clarify, my understanding of the three business days, that's exclusive of the posting and the date of the meeting? Because it, it, on, on other, on other Boards, we're, we're not counting the day we post, then three business days, and then the fourth day. I, I, I'm just getting different information.
Because our meetings start, some, we're doing three days in front of the meeting, so it's three full days in front of the meeting.
So Kay, excuse me, for clarification, our meeting is at 6 o'clock, 6:30 on?
We don't count Monday.
I know, but if it is Monday, do we post on Thursday? When do we, what is the date?
No, we post Tuesday evening.
Tuesday, okay.
So Wednesday, Thursday, Friday are the three full days.
Before.
So for our, our routine Monday 6:30 meetings, we're posting on Tuesday before 6:30?
Correct.
Okay.
We give it, we are literal about that. Three full days. Bidding, our new threshold is $100,000. We don't have to worry about that because we already bring to the Board $100,000. CJ Local prohibits any, um, D E I activities by vendors, and we now have to have that, we have it already in our standard contracts. DBD Local, I'm sure, we've already started that activity. We bought a set of contracts to the Board already. It's the infamous administrator moonlighting law. We talked about that a couple of months ago, we bought, or maybe three. We bought some contracts to the Board. And there are some specific requirements about that, that the Board has to make a determination that is done completely on the contractor, on the, on the administrator's personal time, that they have a contract, and it's not something that will be harmful to the district. So the Board has to make those findings in order to approve that work for the administrator. And it ha, it excludes specifically the superintendent and assistant superintendents. Okay. E F A Local, um, it has a, a avenue for parents to make a request to review instructional material. And then we have heard about that we had the change in the child abuse, child abuse reporting law from 48 hours to 24 hours. And along with that, a failure to report now, when an administrator does not report, that carries with it a civil liability for personal liability on that. Yes, it's very serious. So those are just an overview of some of the other major revisions. And then there are some items that you've already addressed, the cellphone policy, we addressed that this summer. E F B Local, you addressed that in August. That's the instructional material, namely the library materials, the procurement process, and parental access to be able to, um, address those, the review of those materials. And then D E C Local, um, dealing with F M L A for classroom teachers, uh, they don't have to have that as concurrent use of that leave, and then the definition of, of daily rate of pay. So all of those you've already looked at. Any questions? There are some more. We had 28 local policies for your review, and we're asking for first and final when you approve it tomorrow because we've had to wait for it for so long. So we're asking, that's why I'm in front of you tonight, to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the Board? I see none.
Are you sure? Are you absolutely sure? Okay, they're telling me to go sit down. I'm going to turn off. Oh, turn the mic on. That concludes our report for tonight, and we're headed for Executive Session.
We will adjourn into Executive Session under Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney, Section 551.072, Real Estate, Section 551.074, Personnel Matters, Section 551.076, Security Personnel or Devices, Section 551.0761, Cybersecurity Measures, Policies or Contracts Intended Solely to Protect Critical Infrastructure, Facilities, and Section 551.082, Student Disciplinary Matter, if any, under the Open Meetings Act. It is now 9:51 PM. It is now 9:51 PM.
We will reconvene into open session. It is now ten twenty-three PM. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Bates? Second. The time is ten twenty-three. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the time is now ten twenty-three. Who's praying tomorrow?